It is now ten o'clock. We will open our regular meeting of County Board of Commissioners and we will start with a public works update. From Public Works Director Jeff Hunter.
There you go.
Oh, I appreciate that one. As long as I don't call it to my office before this. Heather here. Do you have something on? Yes, I do.
Oh, thank you. You have a question about that.
You might not be.
Yeah, I didn't figure, but I was gonna drive by and look at it, but I have a question about that too.
While I'm contributing to. It's almost like you're building a damn jail with this one.
We'll explain that one.
Whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna skip to the very back and the reason being is I have the auditor here and I don't want to take up a bunch of her time. And actually to just talk about, I didn't actually ask her to come, but I think it's good that she is here. And this is good news. Heather acquired some grant money, correct me in any time that I get out of line here. To, because she's required to have secure ballot counting and got a grant for eighty thousand dollars. We worked with her to do this and what our plan is, is we looked at where she could have this without it becoming a major project. The best place to put this is where the Veterans Officer is now in that office. Because they need to be secured, has to have a door that, you know, you can keypad so people can trace who's going in and out, has to have some windows. So the idea is to remodel the Veterans Office in her area. Why we do that, we'll also remodel that crappy bathroom, I don't know how else to say it, upstairs. That's the ADA bathroom that somebody just threw together because they needed, because they were required to have one. We cleaned that up, we can do that all under the grant. That Heather got, so it'd be no cost to the county to do that. Where. The thing is, is I have kind of an idea about this, but again, this is not my thing to move people around. My thought though is, is we move the Veterans guy down into Economic Development where the. SDC person sits, move the SDC person to. WSU.
Thank you.
I talked with Richard, I also talked with Rob about this, see what their thoughts were. And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Rob's supportive of this. So, because we need, we have to get the Veterans personnel so we can actually use that area as. There's a lot of room in WSU.
How many offices are actually in WS?
There's two.
That's what I thought, two in a storage unit.
Yes. We could do that also. Yeah, I don't really know either what either one does, but I thought that the SBCD person works with or works for W, is actually employed by WSU.
So that's kind of the kicker is I understand where you're coming with Veteran Service Officer, but if we're making that a community. Department. I can understand the. Veteran Service Officer being in there, if it's a community liaison type of a. One shoe, one pony. Thing, but I also understand the SBC, SBDC, if it's WSU going to WSU, I can see it the other way around too. I also was under the impression that before we even talked Veteran Service Officer. The Economic Development Department was looking for someplace for the SBDC person because they needed that office space for their own personnel. So technically.
That's because they have the impression that everybody needs to private off. And so the one that matters though is the SBDC person deals with confidential information.
Well, so does the Veteran Services.
Yes, they each, these have to have their office, that's why, again, I don't care where we put them. Doesn't matter to me, we'll put them wherever. I just threw those out as options, but if there's other options or moving them around, they just need offices. And I know that I have those spaces available. WSU has an office space and so does. Economic Development, as long as, you know, I don't know, there might be future plans to put somebody in that office.
I, I kind of look at it that, I mean, I like I said, I see it both ways, moving whoever we move, I can understand the person's wants. But I also kind of look at it that. Maybe. Sharing a WSU office, since they both work for the same. Outfit. Might coerce them into getting along better. Than throwing a Veteran Service Officer in there like we had Noxious Weed before and that went over not so great. You throw the Veteran Services person in there, I think you're gonna have the same chaos. If you get to a microphone, if you want to talk, sir.
One thing I, I don't know for sure, well, I do know for sure the Veteran Service Officer has locked files, have to be secured, correct? SBDC, I'm not sure she stores a lot of files in that office because she, it's only here so many days a week. So whichever office works best to secure the Veterans' files, which would probably be the one in Economic Development. Unless she has files in there as well that she has to store on site.
Yeah, the only thing I've heard from SBDC is they need a private conference room to have their talks. Not for storing files and that kind of stuff, so. That's, that pushes me, the Veteran Services up in Economic Development and the Community Development.
She also works with Casey Peta and stuff, doesn't she?
Well, she works for.
Her involvement was Richard and everybody, I've seen pretty heavy involvement there. I like the idea of the Veteran Service on the main floor too because of accessibility.
I think you're. Going to open up a.
Well, we have.
Can of chaos.
We have changes in WSU too, if I remember right from last week, so I'm not sure.
It still comes down to the WSU Director is not our employee.
And part of the concept was between WSU employees, did they share an office space? You know, the Veteran Service Officer cannot share office space, much of this highly confidential protective information, so he could have. People, you know, other people in there. As much as maybe. The SBDC could potentially. I remember that one of the, because we were talking about SBDC sharing an office, because she needed an office like Sam and. And we were talking about putting her in WSU. You've got an office, you're not always there and.
As I said, I don't have a problem with SBDC going to WSU at all. I think you put Veteran Services down there, you're gonna cause, gonna cause chaos.
But I, I do really appreciate, you know, having that on lower floor and that makes sense.
And being able to lock up their information. They, no brainer, they have stuff, they have to lock up.
Right.
Yeah, they would all have their own lock.
And just because you go in a main entry door doesn't mean that's a whole department, it could be divided between the two offices.
I don't have to know today. I just, you know, we're not gonna start the project till probably November. We've been coordinating with Heather.
Isn't Hannah on our schedule today or is it Thursday or? When was it? Yeah, so technically, I guess if you don't know, it'd be nice to not make a decision, to be able to do some research, maybe even ask Hannah. What her preferences.
Okay.
And not that you would ask, but.
Okay, good, because I know what she's gonna tell me.
Well, I know what she's gonna tell us too, but if she's coming in on next Tuesday, we can ask the question of which, which one would you prefer?
Frank's a charming guy.
Well, I don't think Frank would. Frank would not be as easy to. Deal with that Hannah had Marty for so long and I don't know that Frank is not Marty. So that's why I said you were good chaos.
That office that he's in, that's gonna be like always a secure location for balance and so.
Yes, the state would lock, would like all of our tabulation equipment caged in some manner when it's not actively being used. I'd rather not put bars on my. There's no ventilation and that would be way more.
Yeah, we didn't, we wanted to keep it close so it was, so her people could come and go as they needed to, so they weren't up and down, up and down.
Well, the building's plenty big enough, it's just the offices are too large and the ceiling space is too large and. Open floor panels, very nice for cubicles, but not very nice for private offices unless you went and.
We could just move my entire election center into Wausau. And then Hannah over at my office.
How, how can? Oh, you're.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, let's let us.
Okay, we'll come back, we'll bring this back up again. Oh, we'll, we'll bring this, we can rehash this. Okay, I'll get. We'll go through the other stuff pretty quick. We have, we have a hearing today, as we've talked about today and tonight. Consent agenda, we have a supplement agreement number one with bear testing to increase the amount so they can do testing.
Can I put you on hold real quick, we gotta have the Under Sheriff in the room, do you have something pressing for us or do you want to hang out until he's done and then? Okay, you're just here.
Okay, well, I have something for her too, like we'll break, I, I don't know.
I didn't want to make her sit here for an hour.
I don't, I don't, I don't know if she's here for that anyway. Because it's just a heads up, they're gonna present, a lot of that'll be presented by there. So we talked about that, we have a settlement agreement for East Road, this is for the underpass that we have to reconstruct as part of our paver. We have the first and final pay estimate to West Coast Solutions, this is for grinding up Market Street that everybody was so happy about. Grinding up Market Street, Bickleton Highway, in public hearing. Construction Courtney Road is substantially complete.
Can I back you up to the grinding of Bickleton Highway, why was that? Hopefully you can tell me why that was done and grinded and then is waiting so long for asphalt that he only have a certain amount of window where he could actually do the grinding, what, that's what I assume.
Yeah, we, we only have, because we still have to go in and compact the base. And now after we had all the trucks and everything on it, we got a bunch of soft spots. Which actually, if you're gonna get them, this is the time to get them, so you have failure. So now they'll have to dig them out, even with the, because in Market Street, it doesn't have a lot of base, it was just basically paved on top of dirt. And so we ground it up and we knew, we dug it out, we put some material in, we put fabric in and it's even then. It failed at some locations because the water hit it so hard and all the truck traffic and everything. So we dug it out to the forty-four inches to the hard pan. And brought it back up and so the goal, we have to get it paid back or Bob will find a new place to live before the car show.
When is that?
Uh, that's in Labor Day weekend, but the goal is to do that by August twenty. Okay, on the construction schedule, you said we do have substantial completion for Courtney Road. Contractors working on completing the punch list. Rock Creek, you know, Highway Eight contractors still working on cementals, we have not, no date has been established yet to start. But we can't start until the fall anyway due to the fish window. Slope flattening is complete on Pine Forest, we got some more to do on Trout Lake Highway. Guard rail installation will begin next week and that will take care of that project. That's all federally funded, same with the white plastic lines and the contracts and bonds have been sent to the contractor for signature. And we're still working on the, on the traffic council, will be because we're using our staff. Road design, curb warning, project is on ad, bid opening is August fifteenth. Data collection documentation is being drafted. Division one spec for Bickleton Highway paving, that's what the Market Street rebuild is for, because we're gonna come in and pave that. Along with East Road and a part of Roosevelt Grade, the part that didn't get paved. And we're waiting for Division one approval. Sundale rightaway packages are being complete. We're waiting for concurrence with DHAP on the archaeological report and then we will send out for right away. East Road, we're working on that also, rightaway process is complete, now we can start working on actually doing the project. Bridge repair bundles are drafted preliminary documentation. And we're starting preliminary work on the Schrontz Road Bridge replacement, the overlay on. Sunnyside Road, there is one little kicker to that, which we could discuss later on when I get it more hammered out. The. The solar companies came to me, part of their project is, is they have to temporarily fix that bridge. And it's about, I did a hundred thirty thousand to that. They proposed floating the loan and they would pay for the whole thing. And not do a temporary. And I said, they gotta propose something to me. See what that means, I see where they're going with this stuff. If they do, because they know we have a grant for to keep, can't hide that, it's known fact. So they're like, well, if we just did, we just floated, just because I don't get the grant money and I don't have the money to float that loan. That's why I'm not gonna build it, but your project's gonna go in before that. They're like, well, how about we just pay it and then you guys pay us back? Yeah, which means they don't lose the hundred thirty thousand dollars. Just, you know, if they're doing it for the, doing the, the minor fix. I'm not paying for that, that just, they, they pay for that out of their pocket and they never get that back. But yeah, I'll bring that forward a little bit more, so just kind of giving you the heads up that they've proposed that. I have to also check with the granting agency and see if they'll even allow that. But typically they will, because they would allow us to float the dollars and then we just. If we wanted to build it and it needed to happen and the county wanted to pay for it. They would allow that, they would be okay with that and then they would reimburse us on the grant schedule, which I think is around twenty-six. So they would let us, but I don't know if they would allow somebody, a third party to pay for it.
Well, they don't know that the solar company would technically, I would want it in the contract that for some reason if we did that. And then the grant was no longer available.
Right, exactly. There'd be a lot more caveats, a lot more stuff to make sure that it was done. And I still don't know, like I told them, I still don't know if that'll meet their schedule, it's a completely different set of environmental documents that you have to go through. When you're just actually just stabilizing the bridge versus just completely replacing the bridge. So it may not meet their window anyway, so they may, that may not be an option. Okay, we'll keep moving on. I think that, that takes care of that, we're, East Maintenance Projects, Base Repair and East Side Culverts are continuing. We're also working on getting tossed for the fire. On the west end, we're doing the base repair from Sleepy Hollow, if you remember when they came in at the sixth year. That this is the time we're doing the work now, we told them we would take care of it, we're gonna take care of it. Upcoming facilities. Civil work sidewalks is the same, we do have a schedule now for health, we're gonna coordinate with Aaron. August fourteenth to the eighteenth, they will be replacing, are doing those, working on those units. Pioneers jails, the same, Superior Court, same. Dispatch is complete, we talked about the new project, I'll just change that.
What, can I interrupt you, go back to the jail roof schedule for September, is there gonna be any kind of a? Conflict with the jail with that roof being done? They're gonna have to facilitate moving anything anywhere to.
No, the nice thing is because the jail's twenty-four hours, seven days a week, we don't have to do it at night like we did when we did the courthouse roof. There may be, because it is a, there may be some complaints, we'll put stuff out. People may not like the smell of the tar, but. And we're talking considerable amount of money difference if you do it during the day than you do it at night. So my recommendation is, you know, we'll work with them, but I say we keep moving forward, we're not going to nights or weekends. We pay a lot more for premium time. And the events side, Back to School Bash is this Saturday. Radio rodeo Bible camp was a success, we worked it out, everything worked out fine, they were very happy. We're preparing for the fair, which is coming up August fourteenth through the twentieth. Annex for remodel, floor covering is complete. We're reinstalling doors and doing some other small items along with our carpenters are jumping back and forth between that and getting some stuff done at the fairgrounds. Some projects, the fair board won't, that they're paying for. Fuel Island, we talked about. Radio tower, that's where that plan comes in. The foundation was poured last Thursday, tower construction is scheduled for next week. What you see on this plan, you see all the dots. All those dots, that's around the perimeter of the site, it's in the site, those are what they call extothermic welds or bonds for the grounding. What an extothermic bond is, is a chemical bond that creates a fusion. Twenty-seven hundred degrees is what they come in at. We talked about this a lot. I mean, you could put a cover over it, you could do a lot of things, but my suggestion, my recommendation is. Is that we tell the contractor they're not doing until October. Do not, I do not want to take the risk of a fire up there.
You can't have a brush truck on site?
Oh, they, they have that, but. But the problem with the extothermic weld is, it's a chemical weld, you can't put it out with water. It's a flashbang thing is what it is, and then it shuts down. But if for some reason, some clown forgets to put cover over the top of it. And there's wind and that blows that sucker out, keeping in mind this north end where they are, right above that is brush. And right in this area here is the reservation. I mean, we've haggled with this a lot, I really have, I didn't want to do this, but there's a hundred and nineteen of these things that they're gonna have to do.
What does that do for scheduling of completion of the project if we do this in October?
They will still get the project complete. Because this'll, this takes approximately two weeks. We were planning on bringing the site on in September, towards the middle to end of September. This would push it back, they could still set the tower, we could put the equipment and you can't hook anything up without the grounding, you can't. Put power to any of the equipment because of lightning strike, burn up all your equipment. But, and I haven't had a chance to sit down with Jeff on this. I mean, we really him-hawed a lot, I really him-hawed a lot about this, because I hate to push them back. But at the same time, having a fire up there terrifies that guy. Because what the tribe did with PUD, just outside of Old Highway Eight on just parcels that got burnt. If our guys, the contractor sets that fire, races up the hill and burns up the reservation. Or a portion of the reservation. Know that that'd be good.
Well, and it's, it's one thing if we're liable. Not knowing the risk. But now the risk has been brought to our attention. So now if a fire happens, not only are you far more liable, but I would say the citizens are gonna be far more angry. And. I'm kind of one of them fire guys that err on the side of caution. And I understand the radio tower. Getting done this year, but as long as it still gets done this year, I don't see a reason. Not to err on the side of safety of the public and postpone that.
We, we did talk to Tony Brownie. Yesterday, see get his take. And he was concerned. He said, you know, you water everything down and, you know, and I think you'll be okay, but. The more I thought about it last night, the hundred and nineteen of these things that they have to do. It's literally a charge, basically is what it is, they wire something in, they hit it with a battery charge, it goes. Shoots flame and it shoots spark, and then it sits right back down. But when it does that, it's twenty-seven hundred degrees, it's extremely hot, it's a chemical. When I found out, water does not put it out.
Right, but, but that's not what, I mean, you're, you're in essence welding.
Yes, you're, yeah, you're welding wire, yes.
You, you don't put that out, it's what that's going to burn.
Right.
Put out and everything that's going to actually burn, as long as you have a, you know, a brush truck or something there that can put it out and you have fire watch. I, I'm not really concerned, especially I just flew over that and, you know, the sites, you know. I don't see how it's gonna jump from one of these internal things to the brush way over there, you know, that doesn't make sense.
No, and, and that was the first, that was the first opinion I took, honestly, I'm like, I don't see it. And the more I thought about it though, is spark gets blown out. It just concerns me because all it takes is from them not to put the cover on. Because, you know, when I, when I talk with Tony, you would cover it with a fifty-five and then shoot them, you know, and then basically touch it off. But all it takes is the contractor to be careless. And just one time not do that. And even if our inspector's right there, he turns his back, whatever, he's in the restroom, somebody shoots that thing off, it blows a spark out there, we may not know it for a while.
For two days.
Yes, and then if it starts a fire, then we're in violation because. You know, on a level three, you're not really supposed to be doing spark emitting items.
Well, I was gonna say, would we ever authorize this permit for anybody else?
I wouldn't.
Probably not, and you know, I'll talk with Jeff King more. But again, I'll do whatever the board. Says, but I just wanna bring it to your guys' attention that.
Yeah, I, I look at it that even if they do cover, if one spark gets out of there, I mean, how many lightning fires? Did we find during the lightning storm with two days ago? One spark is all it takes, I would never authorize a variance to our burn ban. Or somebody to do this, so why should I allow variance for myself to do it? Just to get a radio tower online two months earlier. That we've been waiting for, for five years. It just does not, the risk reward is just not there for me, so.
How long is this gonna hold us back or how much is this gonna cost if we do hold them back?
Well, there may be a little bit for remote, but they're not gonna hit us with a lot, we won't stand for that. One, because they could have started earlier, they chose not to. So if they would have started earlier, would they have been within the fire window? I don't know. I don't know, I've actually heard from the landowners out there already about, you know, they want them out of there by one. Okay, I get that, it's, it's fire season. Okay, I get that. It's, it's fire season and. I would not, I didn't, would not have this discussion with the land because I could tell you where they would stand on it. Cause I even said, look, you know, we talked to the fire, they could get a waiver and they're like, I don't care if they get a waiver or not. If you're driving across my property, you're not doing it before, after one.
Well, yeah, I mean, that makes sense, especially if you're at a two or three hootout.
Right, and then we're at a three right now.
Right, and so, but as long as, as long as you're doing it in the morning and you have the water and you water it down and I mean. People weld out in the forest all the time on equipment, you know. On logging shows in places that are actually gonna burn, you know, the millions of acres. I mean, this really isn't that much different. Other than we have control and we can tell, you're not doing it after one, you need to water the ground, you need to have a fire watch. All this is, that's normal operating procedure. To stop a remote. It's everything's risk person for one.
Yes.
I don't know that he has guidance yet. I'm a no. Is there any official nos or guesses to give him actual guidance?
Well, especially since we're the rule makers. Uh, it's not a good look on our watch that if we ask the public to do one thing, we authorize ourselves another. And I, I understand that type of work being around construction families and I think it's, I'd rather err on the side of caution. Um, I think you're right to think about it twice. I would rather say a no.
We usually wouldn't require a permit for this welding. I mean, it's.
No, no, I, I.
Flame or anything and it turns off, so.
I, I, I guess. I guess commissioners, my big fear and my thought about it is, is we had a contractor start a fire on one of our projects. Over in Wishram when they did bluff road. And they were on the stinking road and. You know, it's a little different. They were using a cutting torch, but they were, they decided to pull a stupid cutting torch out and they set the whole hillside on fire. We ended up, road ended up paying for some of that fencing up there. This contractor just walked away. Their insurance company didn't pay for it for some stupid reason. And it was just easier for us than to take up the battle back then. We just, decision was made, we just paid for it.
I have no problem going with my seatmates. I guess I just look at it as, can it be mitigated? Can we save the, the county money and can we ensure that it's done safely? That's the only thing, you know, I, I concern, but I'm fine with pushing it off. Just don't let it cost us too much money.
No, we won't, and they're still gonna follow that procedure even in October. I mean, but there's a less, much less likely chance. Okay.
So they can't install any of the equipment until this.
No, they can install all the equipment. They just can't hook it up. Because, because of the chance of, you know, electrical storm or something. This is about a two week process, so essentially they'll come in, they're gonna still set up the tower. It gives us the ability to actually, cause our crews are set, finishing the fence. And now I don't have to try to program around them, not that that's, that's not a big deal. We stopped to finish the front end of the fence because the fence is all, all the way around the compound. It's all has to be. Uh, grounded, so, and they would need, we would have had to get in there and do that anyway. So this, that'll, that'll save them working around our crews too. So when they go in, they spring in their crew, Rick's gonna meet with them today and, and they're gonna talk this afternoon, so. Okay, um. Guard rail, I brought this, this is the, the guard rail on Canyon Road. Um, what happened is, well, there isn't guard rail. Uh, the logging company logged that, that piece on Canyon Road.
How long ago?
This, just this, just recently.
Okay.
And we had this in another place, but the slope wasn't as steep. This is about a one-to-one slope. It is steep and it is a long ways to the line. It does warrant guard rail. Problem is, is, you know, and I told them, I said, okay, here's the steps when I talked to Rick, I think his name is. Said, here's the steps. One, we'll look at it and see if it warrants guard rail. I said, two, just don't have the money sitting around to put guard rail. Um, I haven't had a chance. We're gonna look and see if we've had any accidents. We've been put on notice, so eventually we will have, we, cause it meets the requirement. We've got, he stirred up enough people. We've gotten quite a few calls, I think Commissioner Zolos had a few calls. So it does meet, it does meet conditions to put guard rail. Problem is, it's about ninety thousand dollars.
Why would the logging company not? Have to put the guard rail in if they took the trees off the edge of the road?
Because they own the trees. They can do what, whatever they want with the trees.
Is there anything in their cutting permit from D N R that makes them responsible for damages?
No, and actually, we've been pushing the logging companies outside of this thing to take the trees off the edge of the road. Cause they usually don't. It's simpler and it's cheaper for them not to, but then they blow into the road because they don't have any protection. And then we're stuck with the mess. So uh, that happened up in Spring Creek a few years ago. I think Commissioner Anderson's aware of that. And we had a big mess up there. And then we're stuck cleaning it up because it's in our road. So we've been pushing them to take them. And so they took them and, you know, now, like I explained to Rick, I said, it wasn't a safe condition anyway. You wouldn't want it to hit a tree. You don't, still don't want to hit a tree, but.
But it's better than going off a cliff.
Yeah, and especially now that now you can see it and. And our supervisor said it gets pretty slick there in the winter and so.
Would uh, what kind of a road is that? I'm not familiar with it. Is it?
It's an O seven. It's one of our arterials.
And it used a lot.
So like, we have the same thing, like, you know, when they logged on Stotts Road, Upper Stotts, you mean, it used to be all wooded like that and now you, you've got.
Yes.
Cliffs. I mean, I did Canyon roads and all tier, arterial, but stop, I mean, that just happens every.
It does, it does, and in stats, we didn't do it because we look at it as primitive and, you know, that's a different story.
That's not primitive through there. The top, the top end of Stotts isn't primitive, is it?
It's a lot lower volume though.
Yeah, it only gets primitive after you go past the house.
Yeah, I think you're right, and but nobody actually complained. Hey, but boy, again, we got somebody in Canyon that is complaining and then once they put us on notice that it's not safe. We go out, we actually do the look. Then if somebody does come out. Um, it, it'll probably be bad.
Any potential grants for it if there has been an accident through that area?
There would be, um, there might be. The problem is, is we're quite, I mean, we could, we could definitely get a Fed grant for it. But we're years out for that. I mean, I have seventy thousand programmed for next year for guard rail. Uh, repair and upgrades. Um, but I don't, these, these people may not. Yeah, well, again, Commissioners Olers talked to them. I've talked, you know, talked to a couple of them. And I told them this is the process. We gotta have the money. Well, the board's gonna give you the money. I, we guarantee it. I go, oh, okay. But um. But I'm just giving you the heads up because I, uh, you know, once I tell them, because they want to know.
You don't have any other funds that you can move around in your. Billion dollar public works rep, but you're having with a general fund to ask this guy group?
Well, I can see, uh, we'll talk about that more in the budget. Our funds are very not what people think they are. They're very limited and I really don't have anything. I will look though and see if we can drain something out. You know, there's the potential to cut back. I prefer not to do that though on the Bickleton Highway. Cause you know, we want to keep that moving forward. There's that potential. I'll look at. But we had enough programmed in to do um, Courtney Road. But let me look, maybe we could squeeze together enough to get that contract. And because we have a guard rail contractor here, it'll take us a little while. Maybe we can get a decent price out of it. We get that in. But I will, you know, we'll try.
Just want to research, let me know.
Okay, we'll try to do that.
And so I guess being put on notice, that's one thing, but. The county didn't make a change. A private landowner made a change, so then I would ask, do we really have any more liability than we've ever had? Whether you had a tree or you go off the cliff.
We have live to some degree. I'm not an attorney. I mean, we have liability, but you have to have time to fix that too.
You gotta have time and money.
Yes, you, you can't just all of a sudden, you are correct. You can't just, they logged the trees and all of a sudden you have to react immediately. But I don't know how that would play out if somebody went off there and.
But we could put it on the six-year road plan, right?
Yes, well, I mean, we could do it next year for that matter, because we have seventy thousand dollars. We could easily, I could easily move stuff around and give us the rest of the money.
What I'm thinking, if you can't find your money this year, then it's just gonna have to be.
It would just have to be next year and we could program it so it came in in January.
So my understanding there was a guard rail there and the logging took it out or the trees were your buffer?
Trees were, the trees were.
Now, okay.
Yeah, there was never a guard rail.
Okay.
No, if they, if they take it out, the guard rail, that'd be a different conversation altogether. But no, the, the trees were used. We had, we had the same thing happen.
Had them cut them trees off about five feet.
And guard rail posts.
Then you could just put some two-by-fours.
There we go. It'd be like all natural. Okay, a couple other things real quick. I, we worked with Benjen, Benjen got another grant for T I B. And we're gonna do some paving and some chip sealing for them in Sep-. Excuse me, in September. So more work for them. Um, we talked about the auto secure area, cell block vents and uh. Um, we're still working on a price on that. And I, this is not, well, I can't even see her, but I said she is here and I have it on the list. I wanted to bring it to your attention. And she may be able to add more light on this. We got a call from uh. The person in charge, uh, Lauren saying that they had an audit at the jail. And that they had to get the venting changed because people could stick a blanket in there and essentially hang themselves. Um, I don't know who designed it. It's terrible location. The venting is right by the stinking toilet. And you can't change the venting, so you gotta just change the, we're proposing to change the vet covers. We'll bring a cost forward, but I, in that fund, I do not have the extra money to do that. Um, but I just wanted to, you know, let you guys, let the board know that that's where we're headed. Um, we're put together, we're gonna, we have some different alternatives. We're gonna find the cheapest alternative. Essentially, we're gonna replace it. The vents now, they're horizontal with vents that have small holes in them. Where you can't like a three-sixteenths or three-thirty-second hole, you can't put a blanket in there, tie it off, jump off the toilet. Did I cover that correctly? Did I cover that? You went ahead. Okay.
There's actually, so I was just down in uh, one of the cell blocks, there's.
There's two vents, yes.
So there's two big covers per cell, so.
Sixty of them is what we counted.
Yeah, that one's not a uh, road fund regardless, so I'll be paying for that one way or the other.
And I don't know what their timeframe is, you know, Lawrence said it needs to be done. I don't know.
Now.
Okay, I assume it's now. Yeah, so you're familiar with it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Um, I have a question on the fair and them wanting to put the, the new livestock barn. Using duly funds. Can you give me a brief rundown of duly funds? Do they? Do we have to authorize expenditures to duly funds or do they just get to pick and choose whatever they want to do and not necessarily what? We want to do or how does that work?
That's a good question because I've never really, I've been told, I mean, it's in your budget. Ultimately, it's in, if the treasurer has control, so. Um, I assume you have a say because you guys control the budget. Again, this is me just assuming. So I don't know that for sure. Uh, they do have to come to you to expense it. We're preparing the, the bid packet and you'll have to approve the bid. You know, just like you would if, if we were doing.
Where, where, do you have any idea where we would find the? On track resolution, whatever that Jen chicken or head yes back there.
Oh, see.
So if I can get some kind of an update or the board can get some kind of an update on that to make sure their plans are the same as the community's plans and. Uh, we're all on the same page.
I'll see what I can find. I'll work with Jen and whoever else, I mean.
Um, cause I, I still would like to sit down with the user groups, which the fair is one of them. Um, to get their take on what improvements they would like to see. Um, at the fair and it, not that I'm against the livestock barn, but if we're gonna be using a million of the one point five million of the duly fund. I think that's a big enough investment that the stakeholders need to, more of the stakeholders. Uh, need to have a say in it, but that's just my personal opinion. And it may turn out that that's the answer.
Right.
Uh, I just think everybody needs to be on the same page and I need to know how that duly fund actually operates.
I will see what I can find. It was, you know, we were kind of kept out of that. We just heard that. You know, after message that was will to the fair board not to be used for the rodeo. I. I've never actually seen the will. I've just heard that. You, oh, see, I don't even have to worry about it.
I figured, we figured, yeah, you don't have to give me an update today, just uh, figure. Uh, get, get us some information on that, make a little presentation for an education and that would be great. Um, that's what I had. What's with the office chairs, by the way?
Oh, sorry, I, um, these, they offered to give us these. For the Dallas Port Community Center.
Who's they?
Um, Bruce Bowman. Uh, they gave some to walk app. I don't know where they even got them. I haven't really talked to Bruce yet, but uh. So I wanted to kind of give you the heads up. They don't stack as tightly as the ones at the community center. But the ones at community center aren't in the greatest shape anyway. I wanted to talk to the board. I wasn't gonna talk to the community council because we know which way they would go. Um, if the board's okay, um, they look at it as, you know, the county is a non-for-profit. So they gave them the law gap. When they say like, you're non-for-profit, it. Leaves me down the path, they're probably gonna use it for a tax credit.
Make sure that they have, you know?
About forty. So that would, you know, helps there. It takes up more space to store than what there is down there, but I mean, than what they use now.
More comfortable too.
Yes.
Yeah, they might trade out some of theirs.
Yeah, we would throw some of those away. If the board's okay, we'll move forward and collect those.
My vote would be yes.
Okay.
Any questions for? Our director here? Your longest update yet.
I know. We'll try to get it back on.
I feel far more knowledgeable than I normally do in fifteen minutes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will have a road project for you eventually, but let me get my stuff in order.
Okay. We'll see you at one thirty.
Yep.
Just letting them finish their chat to see if they needed anything amongst them. You guys have any updates or reports? We did get, um, we do know the numbers from the insurance, what it's gonna cost next year and it's about one point two million.
So back to where we started?
No, we started at one point four and that was two years ago. So I'm gonna guess I would be closer to two million today. Based on the percentage everybody else is going up.
So was that, so was that like a fourteen percent and a six percent? So that's what it brought us to one point two?
So yeah, but our last year was only uh, based on ten months. So when you add the additional employee hours, which is what our insurance is, and I could give you guys those documents. Um, it figures what our employee hours are and then you pay your premium based off that and then obviously you risk.
Right.
But um, it is kind of enlightening because you can compare our employee hours. To other counties' employee hours.
Okay, and.
Which becomes enlightening when you figure we have twenty-four thousand people in our county and some of these other counties have fifty thousand people in their county and they have less employee hours. In other words, we have more employees than Kansas twice as.
We might also be twice the physical size of.
Well, yeah, maybe, but it, it adds that. Equation into your insurance is based on how many employees you have.
Really? I thought it was based on like the assessed value of all the. Really? I thought it was based on like the assessed value of all the buildings.
Property assess value, but risk and liability is.
Oh, okay.
Um, so yeah, no, you could look at that and do some little judging and. It becomes interesting, but, um, yeah, no, still, still a cost savings from the other. Um, insurance company, and I would also argue that it's a way better service. And we are in a way better financial position insurance-wise. Moving into this uncertain insurance market over the next couple of years. So I, I, it's still a good one.
And the little things like the stuff that we're gonna have to pay out are not gonna get deemed against, right? Like the small little car accidents.
Right, that's the other question I, I have that we need to, I wouldn't mind looking and getting an estimate for. Right now, we have a ten thousand dollar deductible and you don't get dinged as a claim unless you're over ten thousand. Uh, we tend to be under ten thousand or over hundred though. Are, the, the few we have are huge or they're like the three we have that grab, public works gravelled in trouble. They gravelled some vehicles on accident. Uh, they're all below.
That you say you were used to turn, you were used to supposed to turn it in, even if you just paid for it.
And you got ding.
And then you got ding, but that's gone.
The ding is gone. But the question I have is for everything, we're ten thousand, you're gonna get dinged now. We might consider, the problem is the next step of deductible is twenty-five. Um, we really don't have anything between ten and twenty-five, and I don't think historically we've had anything between ten and twenty-five that I'm. Uh, but I don't know what jumping to twenty-five might change that premium that we pay. Or how much it would change that premium for us to consider.
I think I have a history of claims I can back look.
Because same deal, if we have a twelve thousand dollar claim, we have one of these gravelings is eight thousand. You have the twelve thousand dollar claim, you're not getting big for it. Which could cost you way more in the long run.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I do think we might look at exploring the option of moving the deductible to twenty-five. Having them giving us a rate quote for the twenty-five, looking at past history of claims to find out what we, what we've had. That's between ten and twenty-five. Uh, and then we have to figure, you know, rate of inflation on our past claims to figure what they would have been if they were done today. Cause that, that little gap in deductible coverage does worry me when we're with the ding ratio. Other than that, I, I'm good with where we stand in terms of.
I just wanted to. Say a quick thank you to all of you guys for the. Help and assistance in last week's fire. Jeff Hunter was amazing. Every time I was on the phone with him, he had people out moving signs and we moved them frequently. It was a phenomenal collaboration of working with the other departments and working with teammates that come in to fight the fire. I just. It was good to see the county come together and really support the community of Bickleton. And I think it, overall, we're pretty fortunate. We didn't lose any primary, uh, residences. You know, no, nobody was hurt or lost their life in that fire. So I think overall it was a good experience and I know we all learned a lot. I just wanted to say thank you, guys.
Well, thank you too. I think everybody, all the departments and all of the electeds. Uh, everybody came together, everybody worked marvelously together. I think it was a learning experience for a lot of us that haven't been through that before. Uh, but in, in, so when you go into a learning experience, you understand mistakes are gonna be made. But the mistakes were very few and they were very minor.
Right.
So that, that makes me proud of everybody involved that, uh. Yeah, that turned out well.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, and thank you to all of you guys. The hours and it was crazy.
Yeah, I only logged, I only put fifty-four down, but I know it was more than that, so.
How about, how about our, our deputies? How many hours overtime?
Um, I'm not sure I've, we've, Karen's working all that up. Uh, we separated it out on the time sheet so we could track it all, whether it was regular hours or overtime hours.
We're gonna be able to potentially, uh, turn that in for.
Yes, that's, yeah, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, it'll all be able to go through FEMA.
Yeah, an incredible effort on the posse for their volunteer hours. The community really appreciated them being able to man the roads for what could have happened.
And forbidden Franklin County's posse to step up. They actually manned two posts along Highway fourteen, uh, for us for days. Um, so that was phenomenal, um, to have that kind of help. And the D E M out of Yakima, um, he orchestrated volunteers to come in and do door knocks if they needed, uh, the. Grandview Middle School for a shelter for people to go up through that way. That way we didn't bring them back through fire for evacuating.
Anybody ever went to Grandview?
Uh, no, I don't think that they did. And, and I wouldn't.
They talk into the Red Cross here, they had one person that first night.
Right.
That then left and they never saw another person other than people coming in to try to.
Which I would expect out of a small community like that. Um, and then of course the Yakima County Fairgrounds opened up for any animal evacuations up that direction. Complete with people with trailers ready to go. And then their D E M guy, and I don't remember his name, he met me out along Dot Road when I was out there. Um, he actually come out and spent about ten hours the one day I know that he was there, you know, out in the field looking and. And making arrangements and stuff. So that's pretty phenomenal that, that these outside counties just really stepped in and, and come in and helped.
I had other communities reaching out to me. Uh, that apparently went through a fire in Bickleton and helped them. So, yeah, they were reaching back to try to outback out and I'm like, I just, so far I haven't heard anything. I haven't seen anything. Everybody I've talked to says we're good, so.
Right. And I've been trying to stay in, uh, almost daily contact with, um, Jennifer from out at the store. Uh, because phone service is still, I believe, an issue out there. I reached out to my source through FirstNet to see about getting the A T T FirstNet trucks out there. But the problem is they have just a handful of customers, um, not enough that they could. Take a tower out and make a difference.
So do they have to be?
Would still only work for FirstNet. It would only work for. And they can, they can open it up to work for A T and T as well. But it just doesn't have, they just don't have the.
But it wouldn't cover Verizon.
Correct. So, and I believe from what I remember of our conversation that they do have a lot of Verizon out there.
So there's more Verizon here than A T and T.
In this fellow?
Mm-hmm, there's a lot of Verizon. So. But anyway, I just.
Yeah, that's something we need to work on statewide. I was hoping that would be an option. So that we can add that in our emergency plan to step three, call them. Uh, for the next time, but if it's not gonna work that well, we're still gonna need to rely on. The state when they send their crews to potentially change their policy to send an antenna for the public as well.
Right.
Uh, so I've worked with, uh.
Well, and Verizon has portable units like FirstNet does. And so maybe we just have an emergency contract. Um, I've got a contact, uh, name that I met at Wasp, and maybe that's something we talk about in our after-action review.
That's definitely, the cell phone is definitely something we will talk about in the after.
Yes. All right, I'm gonna go back to work.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jen, do you have something for us?
I just wanted to add.
You have to come to the mic if you're gonna talk too much.
I just wanted to add that, um. When, when we end up, um, in a state of emergency, if, um. Part of that process is letting finance know, finance manager, because now I'm, I'm playing catch-up. But, um. I do have. Um, Sheriff's Office, Emergency Management, the Assessor's Office, Public Works, they're all tracking all of that time related to that fire. I will be dealing with F Mag. I've been in contact with the state, uh, Military Department and, uh, my contact up there. Um, so that ball is rolling, uh, but it also goes countywide, so I have to reach out to the P U D as well as fire districts.
Conservation District.
And Conservation District. So we're currently in that process, um, of just collecting. Who all might have reimbursement, but it is quite a process, especially during, uh, budget season.
I saw W D F W out there.
But, um, yeah, I've been working with, uh, Jeff King and Debbie Lynn and as well as the state. And all, all county departments are, um, identifying those charges. As well, so we'll have that information later.
Good.
Thank you.
I did go drive out through the fire. I had to go in on Sunday or, yeah, Sunday morning Roosevelt had a. Appreciation pancake breakfast for the firefighters, so I went out to. Uh, and then throw up Old Highway. Up to Bickleton and then down, uh, Middle Road to go look at the solar farm. Um, and took Middle Road all the way out to the Roosevelt landfill and swept back around and so I got to see a lot of the country. Uh, and drive past where the Grange was. But, yeah, no, it's.
Where's the Grange was?
Was.
Oh, what's that?
I don't. Yeah, I did not go down to where it started down on Newell. I didn't go out that direction, but it was very interesting to watch it sweep through a field. And watching the fire line that's literally fifteen feet wide sweep through. Almost like lava or lava flowing through a weed field where it's just these little ten-foot runners. And the middle of it's just all the standing weed. I mean, because that fire was blowing so fast that it couldn't even spread sideways. Uh, and I don't believe some of that was airplanes dropping. No, it was, uh, it was just. Completely laid down on itself, well, so watching some of those movements. Were just literally blew down a fence line and then went about twenty feet out in the weed, but didn't take everything with it. It just sprayed down the fence line and it's just, it was just kinda weird. Um, yeah, any other board pending or lunch break?
And I asked to add something to workshop for Thursday. I'd like to have a discussion about commissioners' organization and our, our work together. And since I've been here, I've always been beating the bandwagon for strategic planning. And I, I wanna condense it down further and just take a snapshot, not look so big, just a snapshot of our relationship, how we work together, what our duties are. Um, I'd like to go over that with you guys in a workshop.
Yep, well, I have no, no issues.
Thank you.
Um, I'm assuming you're Thursday if we have time?
Correct.
Don't know why we don't have time, but I know that works.
And I appreciate the workshop. We have so much going on. I'd like to have more workshops.
But I think we're, we're going to get there. Uh, cause I think we need to have discussions on, you know, we've kinda talked about. Um, policy decisions that we wanna give our employees. Uh, and our directors on various topics, uh, legal. Questions and we need to actually sit down, iron those out and create the actual policy and then. Uh, spread it to the masses instead of, you know, it's, we're bouncing it off each other as a sounding board, but we haven't really done anything official.
And we talk about it, we've talked about it a lot, and we've just talked about basic working order, what our duties are, how that functions, how we are as a board. And I wanna start ironing that out. We've talked about it a lot, but we've never really done anything yet. So if we can set that in motion, then we can move on down through our departments and, and make sure we're a good working machine.
I, I agree.
I appreciate it.
I would like to, um, have discussions and talks about, um. Coming up with some policies on training protocol that we are. Asking in a very stern way, our directors to spend X number of hours a week training their staff. And literally holding them accountable and asking them who they trained and what they trained. Uh, to make sure we are actually going to get the training and cross-training that I've been asking for. For two and a half years and obviously in some departments have just refusing to do it.
Yeah, and if we can start with us and know our parameters, then we can move on.
So it would be nice to have all of those discussions. Set a policy and move on. Yep, yep.
And I think, you know, thinking about goals and policies, you know. At least having that start with us. What are our goals and policies? So far, I think we're kind of individualized. We have some core values and core ideas, but we don't have any solid direction. Uh, that we agree upon as a board. And I'd like to see that change and I'd like to see us come to common ground on some things and be able to move those forward without a lot of struggle or, um. Just blindside on what's going on. Good communication.
I look forward to having that discussion.
Okay.
I had someone reach out and ask where we're at or where we're going on S T R ordinance, um, if you guys plan on putting that on a workshop for. Or where you're at.
I do, it's just for me, it's. It's taken a back burner because honestly with the insurance stuff that I was having to go through, my head was full. And now with the solar thing and the Title Twelve road thing, and I still haven't. Uh, my Title Twelve pack is like this thick. From the old book to the new book, because I haven't been able to check the old book to the new book, page by page, because I really wish they would have.
Got changed.
Struck in things and made the changes in red and instead I've gotta go, and some of the changes are just literally one word. Uh, that you're likely, they're going, hmm, wonder why they changed that one word. Um, and, and so it's. I, I would say it isn't dead, but it's, it's something that needs more conversation. Um, so, yeah, we need to throw on a workshop here coming up, but I'd like to be able to. To do my homework and go into that workshop, kinda like the code compliance thing that we're gonna have a workshop on and tell you the truth, since toward left, I haven't had any time. To look through our code compliance regulations and match it up with the flow chart and. And I don't wanna just schedule something to show up and be unprepared because I haven't had time to get to it. So it's, that's kinda where I'm at with short-term rentals. We have all these other things literally already on the schedule. That I would like to bang a couple of them out and then, and then add short-term to it if, if that's okay with.
Maybe Wednesday we could talk about that. But, you know, have, or Thursday, sorry, Wednesday, yeah. Um, Thursday, we could talk about that, you know, we have so many subjects, make a list and let's prioritize them. And then how far out do we need to push them so we can get to them? You know, the fire added a lot to our work and what we have to do now and, um.
Yep, and that ain't over.
No.
So, yeah, and that's, that's just the thing. So we get done with something and it's like, you think you're done, like the pot of water. Uh, you think you're done and it's over for review and, yeah, maybe it comes back clean and it just goes to public hearing and. You know, gets done, but maybe there's a change and now it's another workshop and now it's another, you know. Um, so it's, there is part of it. That because there are so many things for me, I'm not one of those that just rubber stamps things. Or just comes through and goes, yeah, no, that's fine with me. Um, I wanna read through it and look at it line by line and judge and analyze because that's what I think I was elected to do and.
So if we could sort out the bigger priorities like S T R and. Uh, potable water and those things, and we set them up for a workshop, say. In, starting September, we pick one priority that's at workshop, then we can let council know we need that back for that workshop. Instead of just waiting till it comes back to us and we schedule something. If we start scheduling our work and knowing when we're gonna have it done. We'll get all the one, two, threes done, maybe.
Right, well, and that's my hope is hopefully we can work forward on this Title Twelve thing and get that off my plate because that is so big. Um, that would free up a lot of time. So. Not that I wanna do things one thing at a time, but the, the fifteen that I currently have is. Is very much taxing. It's definitely taxing any free time I have to go do anything ever.
No, and that's what happens is you have one big priority and you get fifteen other things that stack in with it during the week that happen.
And then say goodbye to the weekend.
So if we could just untangle all the bigger priorities and, and attack them one by one and get them off our plate. We can still manage the little stuff that's with it during the week, hopefully.
Yep, that's where I'm at on that one. It's not dead in my eyes by any means, but it still has a little bit of loving that needs to be done. I still have a few questions. That I need to go research and and talk to building about and talk to public works about and planning about. I just don't have the time to do it. So I mean technically, if you threw it on the workshop on Thursday, I'd just have to tell you, I I'm not ready. I I gotta have all those other conversations.
So make a list for Thursday of your priorities. Bring it with.
My priorities are what we're already doing and hopefully get a few of them off our plate.
Well, you keep bringing bringing up different ones and I keep writing them down now and my list is getting bigger. That brings, I know we have more.
Yeah. Anything else? Oh, I did tell and you guys are the board too, so correct me if you feel I'm wrong. The public hearings. Going forward, we do have new staff. The public hearings going forward, bid openings and public meetings are all done at one thirty. So whether we have one or twelve. They will all be posted at one thirty and we will just take them in order. And then it's just a matter of trying to figure out when they're done and schedule the next thing off at whatever four o'clock or. Or like this, I appreciate this, everything on there that's after those are pretty much just paying bills. There's not a a presentation or something that we have to stop for to get to a presentation. So now that works out well. Yeah, that's all I have for good viewer.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to recess for the lunch hour.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to recess for lunch. Any discussion? Hearing none, others in favor of recessing for lunch, be back at one o'clock, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. See y'all on Zoom land at one o'clock. Alrighty, we are going to open our regular business meeting of the Clucksett County Board of Commissioners, call the meeting to order. Let's record show all three commissioners are present. We will open with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the business agenda as presented. Any discussion?
I would ask, based on the P A opinion that we received yesterday, do my seatmates want to move forward with the public hearing at two thirty?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Just checking.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approval of the business agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We do not have commissioner meeting minutes, so we will move on to citizen comment. Citizen comment will be limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name and your general location where you live in the county for the record. Or even if you're not in the county, at the start of your testimony. There should be a clock up on the screen for the Zoom people, so you know when your three minutes is, please. Try to make sure that your comments are related to county business or things that are happening inside the county and not federal politics. And or that they're not a discussion about anything that we will be having a public hearing on later, which is the Title twelve and the solar. Any Title twelve or solar comments will be taken during those public hearings so that we have them. With that, we'll open public comment in the room. First, does anybody in the room have public comment for us? They're saying no so far, so they're, they might come back later. Anybody online have public comments for the Board of Commissioners today? Raise your hand or unmute yourself. I'm seeing none there either. Wow. That means I might get something done in this half an hour. Well, we will be in public comment until about one twenty five. So if you have public comments in the room or online before that, please raise your hand, unmute yourself or get our attention. And in the meantime, we will be signing documents and working on other homework. So if staff can kind of keep an eye on that Zoom for us and let us know if somebody pops on, that would be awesome and I will also try to keep an eye on. Okay, we're in citizen comment for anything you want to have citizen comment for that is not related to either the Title twelve road hearing. Or the solar projects. Do you have a citizen comment outside of that scope or do you want to wait for the public hearing to have comment in those scopes? Well, if you do, let us know. Sorry, come on forward, ma'am. State your name and general location for the rec.
Jerry Hueson. West side. Anyway, I I like to talk about kind of like an overview of a some plannings, land planning. That I've seen personally in my little almost five years that I've lived here. And I'm going to specifically talk about under campus and my issues that I've always had and do have. You know, I I I got involved with government because I thought, you know, how are you guys citing this large resort? Of ninety-five tiny houses with all the sewer and water and, you know, then you have a restaurant. You got to do the laundry and the linens for all these guests, these overnight guests. It's a lodge, you know, and you know, a spa. And they're coming in under a cute little campground, which it's not. And then now you have hundreds of transient tourists that are going to be traveling that road. You guys, I don't know if you drove that road. And we all know it's not an adequate road for that. We constantly have accidents down, they hit the guardrail all the time at the bridge, at the Oak Ridge and one forty-one intersection. It's a mess there. I'm going to tell you, there'll be death. There'll either be death at that intersection or there'll be death up on that road. So I got involved with government. Thinking, you know, you, they're not going to let this happen. They're not going to let this happen to us, this little place out here, you know, three, four hundred people coming and going. Again, transient tourists, they don't know our area. They don't know what it looks like to look for cattle. They don't know what gravel roads look like. In fact, we just had a car go into the river across from us because, you know, transient tourists just. Drove their car into the river. You know, I guess. So, you know, you have this stuff happening. So we have this C P process. And then I'm, oh, people are going to comment. They're going to say, oh, there's something environmentally wrong. You can't get the water. The road is not adequate. There is. No evacuation plan. You cannot get the people out. They will die. Trying to escape like in California. Somebody's going to save us. No. Nobody saved us. We got into our pocketbooks as citizens. We pulled out our own money. We hired attorneys. We fought our government. Our government took our money that we pay them to be government. And they fought us back and now we're going to have a mess out there. So what's the seat before? I was told again and again, what's my time? I was told again and again. That, you know, don't worry about the C P study. We'll look at this afterwards. We'll look at it after, after. Then why are we doing a C P? Why do we even go through that game? We're going to look at it later. We told you the road's inadequate. We told you you can't evacuate. We told you there's not enough water. They can only use five thousand gallons a day. Department of Health said they need thirteen thousand twenty at eighty percent capacity. Should have been a no there. Should have been a no there. But when we're citing things, stop with the special favors. Because it hurts people. Do no harm. Do no harm. And if you have all these processes. Do them where they really, really consider the people. Really consider the people. And this had a lot, under campus, we saw had a lot of juggling and jiggling and all this. Hiring the hearings examiner, one man who's paid off to do with the bidding. Believe me, I've watched agency after agency be paid off. For special favors and now we're facing great harm. All those people who live up there. They might not get out alive when that drunk tourist throws a cigarette out the window. So if you're going to have environmental studies, truly have them, really have them, really listen to the people, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'm sorry for everybody online. We did not have a clock going on that. Somebody did. Must have started at a wee bit late because that was well more than three. Go ahead, come forward, sir, to the microphone. The three needs moved to five. Or the five needs moved to three.
Bronn Cancelo, living in Goldendale, outside of Goldendale, but I lived there. Twenty-seven years. I'm standing here in a flag shirt. The reason why I'm to the flag shirt is because I grew up eighty-four years. And I respected the flag for those years. I did lots of things. In my life, I always would respect the fact that the the country went by the flag and they believe in the flag. It's not always right, it's not always wrong, but the majority of the people for the time we've been in existence. Believed in this flag. They fought all kinds of wars for it. I fought wars for it. I got elected for it. I've lived on my life. Believing in the flag and what this country stands for. I got to stand down because I'm getting old, but anyway. If if you, if you believe in something and it's been working for over two hundred years. Why do we let it get away from us? And I've called about what I'm thinking about is the majority rules. The majority rules has been a lifeline. For all kinds of different fights in the country over the years. But the people believed in it and usually it won. Whoever won the majority, but we have to have a majority in this place, right here in Goldendale. I don't think the majority are probably really looked at. Do they really believe in it? Yeah. Do you guys really believe in this? Rule of, you know, majority? I don't know. I've been at lots of meetings, not only this place, but school board, different places. You got to believe in something. And if you hear people say. I I like to do this. I want to do this and the majority say it. Usually that in this country, that's how we got to where we are. Now lately, in the past probably thirty, forty, fifty years. Some of some, it doesn't have the same impetus by people. They don't believe in the things that older people have believed in their whole life. And I, I, you know, I was elected one time and I used to open up at the meeting. And when they opened the meeting, it was on television, I'd say. We're on television, folks, and I would thank all the people that showed up for our meeting. I actually said, fill the place up. I want to hear what you have to say. I want to try to help you do the things you want to do. We live by those rules. They, they, the majority, majority of the time won. I had people would say. Ron, why are you supporting that? I said, because I believe it. I, well, I talked to lots of people. I know the people. And they think that's a good thing to do. And so we did it. I had people complain to me. I had alligators all the time at the meetings, biting at me, you know. But you live with that. You still got to live by what you believe in. I believe in this flag. If I could, you know. I spent twenty years and twenty-eight days in the military. I flew just short of two, two hundred missions over Vietnam. I always didn't agree with what we did there. But my job was, I had to follow the rules of my job. All of us did. People spit at you. People talked bad about us. I went to school, I went to a school after I got out of the, last time I went to Vietnam, school asked me to talk about it. What I thought. Because they didn't like it, you know, they booed me when I first went up. I said, you can boo all the world with what you want. I was given, I was given a job. I went and done the job. All my compatriots in the military, we done our job. The fact that we didn't win wasn't necessarily our fault. Because we couldn't get somebody.
Wasn't in any way your fault, sir.
I understand. I understand that.
With that, your time has expired, sir.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Remember the flag and remember majority rules. Sometimes it loses, but the majority wins most of the time. And that's what all I'm here for is. Give whatever the people here, I know I listen to lots of them. It works. They believe in what they're saying. And I think they have their best interest of the community and in their mind. And that's exactly why I came today. You're going to see me walking around for a long time with flag because I'm going to buy every shirt I get. It's going to have a flag on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, goodbye.
Go ahead, Aya Walker, it looks like.
Good afternoon. I wanted to state that I've been requesting a meeting. With the sheriff and the prosecuting attorney. Uh, I wanted to state that I've been requesting a meeting with the sheriff and the prosecuting attorney on the status update of my daughter's suspicious death investigation. That, uh, I've been trying to get a meeting with them since January and they're refusing to meet with me.
Is, is that a question or is that the end of your comment?
I wanted to make you aware that I've been requesting this meeting with the sheriff and the prosecuting attorney. And they're refusing to meet with me.
Thank you for your comment, ma'am. Anybody else in the room or yep, we have Kathy raised her hand first, so then we'll come over to Del.
Hello, Kathy Moko, Golden Dale. I wanted to commend Click Attack County and the sheriff's office and the Click Attack County Sheriff's Posse for all the work they, I've been told that they did during the fire. Um, helping evacuate people from their homes and blocking roads so people won't go down a dangerous road. And just a lot of good, solid help. They're very valuable. And as an aside, today is, uh, until eight o'clock is voting for our three things on the ballot. So if somebody hasn't voted, I would hope that they might. Because I just heard on the radio that there was only like twenty-eight percent in at this point. Of the voting public had voted. So that isn't very good because I know some of it needs a sixty percent to pass.
Forty turnout anyway, and I heard this morning Parks and Rec did have a forty percent turnout already, so.
But then they need.
Then they have to have a sixty to.
Yeah, sixty of the forty, awesome.
Some of us live outside the boundaries, so we didn't get a ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else that has not had citizen comment yet, have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today?
Till Stan was up.
Oh, sorry, Del. I forgot about you. I'm, my bad.
I wish, uh, the board would, oh. Delma Eldred, Golden Dale. I wish the board would consider, um, they're designating a, uh, Fireman's Appreciation Day and maybe present them with a community service award and a fifty-dollar gift certificate or something like that to, uh, recognize, uh, you know, all they've done for people that own property. They've saved their homes and they've done it without pay, you know? So I just thought maybe if you would, uh, come up with a way that you could show the appreciation for the county for what they've done.
Good comment, sir. Anybody else in the room or online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today?
Greg Wagner with CESE. I'd like to know how the commissioners are prepared. If FSEC determines that the Carriage Project is consistent with our land use zone. I'd like to know what your plan is. Moving forward, how will we be represented in the FSEC process? And I'd like to ask, why hasn't this board used the coordination? Where we could get the federal agencies involved with this, because as of right now, the state permits these projects using the R C Ws and the WAC codes, and that's a state code. If we invite the federal agencies to be involved in, it's called coordination. That would bring in the federal agencies that the state would then have to adhere to federal regulations. In the county codes two point seven six, it has a committee for coordination. And it's apparently set up to address that. We have the committee, but of course, there's nobody on the committee. And it's an advisory committee that's supposed to tell the three commissioners. Give them advice on what they can do. So it seems like that we have this coordination already in our county codes that seems to parallel the federal coordination and we're not utilizing it. The state now with FSEC set up with Enslie's appointees, that's how they permit these projects. Through their state regulations, R C W eighty fifty, WAC Code four fifty-eight, the various thirty-four oh five R C Ws and all those. Those are all state laws. They're not, I don't believe they're looking at the federal laws. So Enslie's getting to bypass the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act, various other requirements at the federal level. I believe it's the board's responsibility to look into this and see if we can bring in the federal agencies. I know this works because Susan Roberts, the commissioner in Wallala County, Oregon, did this, wrote invitation coordination letters to, at that time, it was the Forest Service because the Forest Service was working in the National Forest and they weren't incorporating the county. And after this commissioners wrote this letter, the county is involved with any project that the Forest Service wants to do before the Forest Service even starts on the project. Prior to that, they just went in the forest, cut in roads, did control burns, whatever they wanted. And the county didn't have any say in it. So it does work, but it'll take three commissioners, at least two commissioners to write letters to the appropriate agencies, USDA, B L M, uh, EPA, all the federal agencies and ask them to be involved with this project. So I ask that you look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Uh, one twenty-four, we still got time for one more citizen comment. If somebody has it in the room or online. You haven't given this in common yet, please raise your hand or unmute yourself.
Got one in.
Come on forward. And can you lower the hand of the person that already spoke earlier?
This will be short. Candy Magnuson, Golden Dale. Thank you, Dan, for coming and to help those people. I appreciate it, okay? And I know they do too. I prayed to God for him to help us in this solar situation. My gosh, he answered it. The airplane went over and, and sprayed half the solar panels with the red stuff. Thank you, God. So, so anyway. So anyway, I want to thank everybody that helped on that fire, fire. I couldn't go up there and help, but I helped the neighbor feed her animals and stuff while she was gone two days. That's how you do it, guys, okay? So I support the interim zoning for the, uh, prohibition of large-scale development and that township's called out in.
Ma'am, if you're going to testify about the solar moratorium, you need to wait and do that when we open the solar moratorium hearing.
Oh, good.
This is a citizen comment about everything that's, Title twelve or the solar moratorium?
Well, you got.
Or the interim zoning.
God calling, so there you go.
There you go. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, one twenty-six, commissioners have any rebuttal or questions or comments or anything they would like to add? Who wants to go first?
Um, I can go first. I cut, instead of individually today, I'd like to kind of respond to everybody. Uh, because I think all your comments are on the same page. Um, and we've seen that recently because of the local fires. Um, the first fire out on Knight Road when this building emptied and you could hear everybody running out on the floors to go help their neighbors or to go home to save themselves. And then watching Bickleton, who did not leave, who stayed during a, uh, uh, evac notice and we showed up for a meeting there and there were forty-eight people in that room. Uh, the whole community stayed and they had others that evacuated with them and stayed with them. They didn't come into our Red Cross centers. And so I've always thought of Click Attack County as a family and people who take care of people. And I agree, um, the lack of using our citizens' boards has to change. We have to get those boards revitalized and hear our citizens' comments and hear what the people want because that's who we serve. And as a Board of County Commissioners of three of us as one board, that's what we need to be doing. But thank you, all of you, and thanks for showing up today.
Ms. Ramson. Um, I would just, uh, mention to Ms. Walker that the sheriff is in the audience today. And I have found that the sheriff always is willing to talk to anyone and will, and always reaches out. So I'm sure he will be in contact. Um, and with Ms. Moko, I would agree. I commend everyone for all their hard work and effort on that fire. It is amazing. Uh, when I flew over how many homes were saved, um, how many barns were saved? I mean, it is black and charred all around and, and the initial attack was all local resources for quite a long time. And, uh, they did an amazing job. Um, with, uh, to Mr. Wagner, I would mention that, um, coordination and that group, um, the, this, uh, the group that, that wrote that plan for coordination, um, you need a nexus. And so you gave a perfect example of what coordination is good for, and that is when the Forest Service is attempting to do something and that creates a federal nexus. And that's how you bring in, that's a, it's a federal action. And the county is multiple times asked for coordination when there is a federal nexus or a federal agency is doing something. Um, the, the one I can use is the example is the South Kifford, uh, Pincho Collaborative. And that is exactly that. It's coordination. It's all of the local groups that get together to coordinate and help set the policy and directives for those federal agencies. Uh, with regards to, um, like solar projects, unless there's a federal permit that's required. The federal agencies definitely see all of the permits that go through, just like at the county level. We, when we forward, um, any project forward, we get comments from, um, state and federal agencies. So the coordination is, that happens when it's, it has a nexus and a federal permit that's required. And I don't think any federal permits are required with regards to those solar projects. Otherwise, it wouldn't be a C P. It would be called a N E P A. So that's what makes, makes that big difference. And Mr. Consella, uh, yes, the, the majority rules. Uh, but we also have to remember that just because the majority rules, um, baked into that flag in our constitution is while the majority rules, you still have to respect the rights of the minority and people's, people's rights. So the majority doesn't get to rule on every action all the time because people have their, their rights that the majority cannot overrule. But I agree. And with that, I will. Time to you.
Give up the remainder of no time left?
Of one minute.
Mr. Sheriff, did you have a comment you'd like to make?
Like to address, um, Mrs. Walker. A heart goes out to her by her loss. A tragedy to any parent that loses a child. But in this case, he has a copy of the entire report, I'm told. Coroner's report showing that it was a drowning. No indication of homicidal action. It's a sad situation. And I know that each other constantly. I've had several conversations with Mr. and Mrs. Walker. And they've ended up where she's a very accusatory that we're a bunch of country bumpkins, don't know what we're doing and so forth. Now, I can't go into a lot of detail on this investigation.
Please don't.
No. Uh, she has an attorney on board, so there's potential for litigation. So I have no further comments on it, other than to tell her I'm sorry for.
Thank you, Sheriff Sager. Um, I'll try to be quick. Um, Cherry, yes, I understand your frustration with the under canvas and what things get permitted where and that the county uh, doesn't show a lot of empathy towards its citizens on what it permits. And hopefully, as we move forward with a new government, uh, the people have more of a say so, the people have more of a voice, there's more citizen input. Like with the boards and commissions, that we can actually change some of the ways this county has operated in the past to earn back a level of trust from the people that has been lost because they have been kept out of the loop or even if they are the majority on a certain project, we don't want to do what they want because we want to do what the local landlord wants because he's a bigger campaign donor. Um, but some of that falls on the voters, personal responsibility. You need to pay attention to who to vote for. Uh, follow the vote, do some research. Uh, but hopefully in the last six months, you've been able to see a little bit of a change. And I hope in the next year and a half, you see a lot of a change. Um, but that goes into Mr. Consella's, um, talking about the majority and, and voting for the people. And that's something that, at least for me, every vote I make, um, it's not for me and it's not based on my personal opinion. It's based off what I think the majority of the people would want. Um, and a lot of times that causes uh, tensions or at least has over the course of two and a half years as I don't vote accordingly with my seatmates. Um, and I think I was outvoted probably forty times in a year, two years. Um, but it also brought on one of the proudest moments I had when Commissioner Soder was leaving. And he said, you know, we don't always agree on everything. But he says, I, I respect the fact that you always voted for the people. Thank you. But if that's the case, why wasn't there two of us or three of us? Um, but again, that resorts back to pay attention. Um, because some of us are fighting for the people every single day we sit here. Um, Kathy, praise for the sheriff and the posse, absolutely praise to the firefighters that were out there. I told my seatmates that they had a, uh, I think, I think a firefighter in Roosevelt on Sunday with a pancake breakfast. I went and attended that. Unfortunately, there was only about six or seven people that attended. It would have liked, been nice to see a, a better turnout um, in that community because there was probably about twenty-five fire trucks the night of the fire from different areas of this county that were staged in that town. Um, but yes, praise the firefighter, praise the sheriff, praise the posse, praise emergency management, praise the dispatchers. And yeah, they'll give Fire Appreciation Day. That's, uh, that's, let me look into it. I, I think that's a good thing. Citizen boards, I agree. When we started on, that was my first push is to make citizen boards more open to the common man and not that you had to have the right last name to sit on it. Um, because when you have to have the right last name to sit on a board, it becomes not necessarily a board of the people. It becomes a board of the special interests. Um, so we made a policy on how we make appointments, uh, to citizen boards and we opened it up for the public. Now, unfortunately, for the most part, the public hasn't responded. Uh, the public does not apply and, and we ask, please apply and sit on the board. And, um, I understand they're busy and life is busy and we're all volunteers and we have our own little nonprofit projects or fire meetings that we have to go to, but get involved in your government. Uh, apply to sit on a board of something that interests you. Uh, and because that's how we take back control of our government is actually getting involved. Um, and I commend everybody who gets involved. Um, with that, I am chewing away our public hearing time, so I will stop. Uh, if I didn't get to somebody and you want to chat, please reach out to me, give me a phone call or an email and we'll, we'll chat for as long as you want. Uh, with that, we will move on. It's one thirty. It's time that we have our public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. Uh, today we will start with a public hearing at which time any person may appear to make recommendations or comments related to the Title twelve Transportation Road Standards as proposed. We will, um, do, uh, well, let's go with that. Uh, we'll declare this public hearing open by advising that the purposes of this hearing is to take public testimony with regards to the proposed Click Attack County Title twelve Transportation Standards. Um, does staff have a brief overview of the Title twelve standards?
Thank you, Chairman. I am, uh, Jeff Hunter with Cat County Public Works. I'm the director. And, uh, we'll do a quick overview of what these are, how this all got started and the process going through with this. The, uh, what are Title twelve standards? They are development standard, they're child development transportation standards. Please do not confuse them with zoning or anything else similar. They are not zoning standards, but they are public work standards. They deal with stuff like, um, road whiffs, um, access, things like that. Um, why are, uh, the original standards were adopted in two thousand and four. Um, why are uh, the original standards were adopted in two thousand four? They are required by WAC, the county, to have these standards and we have to submit them. Every time we update them to the County Road Administration Board, which governs the operations or some of our operations of public works. Um, why update the standards? Uh, the standards were done, like I said, in two thousand four, a lot of things change. From two thousand four, um. Different rules are set, rules for stormwater have increased a lot since two thousand four. And a lot of other things, it was just timed up, it was just time to update the standards. So how did we go about doing that? I've done this in other places and typically, just like Commissioner Christopher was saying, you get a committee together of citizens. That's how this is done. We went out, we put an ad in the paper, ran a few, uh, ran a couple of weeks, got a committee of fourteen members, three of those were county. The rest of those were residents of the county. Um. We held the first uh. First meeting in April of two thousand twenty-one, so that tells people how long we've been working on these things. It wasn't an overnight thing. This is a very large undertaking. Um, the committee was made up of engineers. Um, also surveyors, real estate agents, developers, ranchers. Um, we had a total of, you know, a lot of experience, some people had thirty, forty, fifty years of doing this, some people had. Five months doing this, it just depended on where they were, but it was a good group. Um, we met over the next two years. Um, to update the standards, it was a big undertaking, the original standards were forty-three pages, this new copy. That everybody sees here is a hundred and twenty-six pages. So again, it. We, the goal of this was to define. Different things, clean up some discrepancies. And also add things that were not part of these standards, such as franchise agreements, stormwater. Road vacancies, right away donation. Large scale industrial development, variance processes and performance guarantees, those were all added in here. In the past, we did them, we still do them, but we didn't have anything in case we ever got challenged, we had nothing that said this was codified. We had an ordinance. So when we made people do road hauls, we were fortunate enough, they didn't challenge us. If they did, I had nothing to hang my hat on to say we can do that. When we finish this process, it will be, it will be ordinance and then they have no choice. We always did it under CIPA, which if they didn't qualify for CIPA, there was no road haul. Under this, under the new standards, the proposal is if they do qualify for, e- even if they don't, they come in, they meet that threshold. They still have to come to the county. Again, I don't want to get into the whole thing with solar, so I'm going to stay away from that, there is different ways, but we we're, that's a different discussion for later on today. Um. So the process for these will be, we'll have the hearings, we are still doing CIPA. So we still have to do CIPA, I didn't enlighten the board on that, I apologize. So there's still be an additional two week period, but you have the decision after tonight's hearing to close it to pub our. Focal comment and just take written comments during the CIPA, that'll be your decision. Um, with that, I want to thank the committee members for all their time and effort. They put forth a lot, none of them got paid. Lot of them work. And they took their their own time and, you know, basically. They took the time to do the research on individual items, or a lot of things covered in this in this these standards. Um, they also. We at the very beginning of the meeting, one of the first things we said is, is no personal projects. Or anything like that could be brought forward to the committee, this is all about the standards, not about anything personal. They were very good and not a one of them brought anything personal forward. None of that was discussed, we did not discuss personal projects. And I would ask the public. When they're making comments, please do not discuss personal projects, this is not the realm for it. Public Works would be more than happy to talk to you about a personal project. But this is overall standards of how we look at all projects. And this covers anywhere from a. Two lot short plant. To. As big of a a commercial project that you could come up with. CUPs. All of this is now covered in these standards, again, where we spent a lot of time on this. I was a couple of, one of our staff members spent. Nights writing, typing all this stuff up. And I can't be more thankful to the to the committee. And with that, I will hand the staff uh. Turn it over to the public.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're now going to open the uh, public hearing to citizen comments. Uh, while doing so, please be respectful of the individual who has the floor. Uh, and please no clapping or cheering or whatever not that would be disrespectful to anybody in the room that can't hear. Uh, and or to anybody speaking. Um, and with that, same idea, please provide your name and address for the record, please come forward to the mic so we can all hear you on the record. Uh, and and with that, does anybody in the room, we'll start with that, have a citizen comment. For or against the Title Twelve Road Standards as written? Come forward, sir. You have any documents for us?
I do have some documents.
We'll do that before we start your clock.
Thank you.
These are in addition to your previous documents, I'm assuming, have they looked a little?
They are in addition to my previous comments.
Okay.
Um, for the record, my name is Matt Childs, address one thousand six Horseshoe Bend Road, Centerville. Um. I am a committee member of the Title Twelve Review Committee and uh. As as the engineering department was saying, um, these people did put a lot of work into it and overall. I think we're pretty close to where we need to be, however, I don't think we're quite there yet. Um, there's still a considerable room for improvement with the existing title call. Draft and um. I'd like to briefly go over some of the concerns that I have. Um. It has not solved the problem that much and perhaps most of county zoning law is now dictated not by the zoning code, but by Title Twelve. Those parts of the county that are serviced by roads less than twenty feet wide. Cannot be subdivided, not even one lot, regardless of the minimum lot size in that zone. I'm submitting a list of changes and improvements that I believe still need to be made to Title Twelve and um, commissioners, you have those in your hands now, and I will summarize them briefly. First and foremost, there needs to be a procedure to grandfather inroads that do not currently meet Title Twelve Standards. This is simple to do and will meet all state laws. Um, next Title Twelve Standards must first and foremost be based on state laws. International Fire Code is not a state law, and though it and other resources have a a lot of value. These things should not be viewed as legally binding things that bind the county. Um, in Title Twelve. The third Title Twelve needs to more clearly differentiate between unincorporated urban areas and their needs and the needs of rural areas. Um, also Title Twelve needs to require. Expensive and time consuming traffic studies only for major developments. As Westside Counties do now. These studies have value only for very large projects with large impacts. And um, as the draft is currently written. Um, there are Westside Counties that that require twice the impact of ours before requiring a study, a a transportation, um. Traffic study. Uh, next Title Twelve uh, needs to send its appeals, um, clearly send the appeals not to the engineering department. As the final say, but to the Board of County Commissioners or some other body directed designated by them. Um. Uh, because the the final decision on on engineering director decisions needs to be outside of the engineering department in the event of an appeal. And um, I would also say that uh. Last, um, the Title Twelve should allow compacted crushed gravel driveway approaches. For a single, single road drive or single. Service driveway approaches, um, that are going to be low use. Uh, instead of the uh, paint and cement. That the county currently does. Um, this county does need good roads and the road standards proposed in the title draft. Or the draft Title Twelve generally do provide that. Over there, sir, are some important things that need to be fixed to return zoning authority to the planning department. Ease the already expensive burdens of engineering and development and better treat our county as a special place that it is.
Thank you, sir.
Little for questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir, I uh. That's a lot to read through, I will have to do that at a later time.
Exactly.
Uh, I did some briefing and I like some of the briefings, so, yeah. Um, thank you, sir, anybody else in the room, do you have? Okay, that would work. Thank you, sir. Um, anybody else in the room have comments for the Title Twelve Road Standards hearing that we're having today? Sherry.
I'm gonna, I'm Sherry with you in Houston. Um, I I'm going to be honest, I haven't read the hundred thirty-seven pages, however, I do know. Um, that the engineer, Public Works has been working on this and I I know you didn't, you said personal projects, but I don't think this is personal, but. Under Canvas was scrutinized, uh, uh, Title Twelve, it didn't meet Title Twelve. With, you know, the placement on Oak Ridge Road, did that road meet that standard? And so I I see how this is very, very important and I trust that our county. Is really looking out for the public health, safety and general welfare. In the future, I don't think things should be grandfathered in, I'm thinking if we're going to get new standards. If it really is for the general safety of us and building forward. I really hope that these Title Twelve Standards are meeting those needs. Because as we see car accidents kill and we do need really good roads, so thank you to the. Public Works and the committee that's worked hard on this and I hope that it does meet. That, you know, what we do accept does meet the safety of people who need to travel in our county, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buskey. Anybody else in the room? All right, we have one more, come on forward, sir. Hang on for anybody online, I will jump to online and then I'll come back in the room in a minute. We'll do online next.
Thanks, Commissioners, my name is Don Struck, I live in White Salmon and uh. I was honored to serve on the committee for the last two years. Um, served on a lot of those types of committees and I can tell you that. Uh, Jeff and Nathan were absolutely um. The best I've ever worked with in terms of this kind of a project, and it is a big project. Um, they listened. They did not try to direct the group in any way. Um, they provided us with the guidance that we needed, uh, legal, legal type guidance. And um, I just thank them uh. Along with the citizens of all walks of life that participated in the Title Twelve. Transportation Standards and recommendations suggested during the past two years. Um. This was, as Jeff said, a very time consuming, it was educational for those of us on the committee. Ultimately, a very worthwhile exercise, I think, and I would encourage you, the board, to. Thoughtfully examine this document and I support the proposed update. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We will go online, does anybody online have citizen comment for or against the proposed Title Twelve? Road Standards Changes. It's almost a tongue twister. Uh, I see one, Diana Bambi, go ahead.
Good afternoon, um, I'm providing these comments as a citizen and not as a member of the community council, we have not had. A chance to discuss this as a, as a council. Um, my address is twenty-two seventy-four Highway one forty-one Trout Lake, Washington. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment to the draft, this is a fairly comprehensive document and those that developed it should be commended for their efforts. That being said, I encourage the B O C C to take additional time and require county staff to clarify some areas in the document. My comments are referenced by section and page numbers seen in the four seventeen twenty-three draft, I don't know if there's a one after that point. In section two oh five, page nine, as currently stated, there's absolutely no flexibility allowed for potential future changes. Definitions that are needed in the document, section two oh nine, page eleven, level of service. Section three ten, page twenty-five, E S A Ls. Section thirteen C, page twenty-six, last sentence, significant time. Section four oh three one B refers to turnout standard plan, none found in the draft. In section two fourteen C, page thirteen, clarification is needed if it references. Roads constructed after this Title Twelve document. Have been approved by the B O C C, or does it mean all roads, including those constructed in place prior to these standards? In section two fourteen G, page thirteen, does the parking requirement include existing conditional use permits that do not meet this standard? In section three oh nine C, I, page twenty-two, flexibility for other servicing materials for shared use pass. Needs to be incorporated. Section three eleven, page twenty-six, I support the concept of proportionate share pilot program, but the definite, but definition is needed for conservative basis. End quote in item B C. Section four oh six, table four. Four dash two on page thirty-two, the construction standards for a shared driveway, two to four lots appears to be excessive, nine inches of base rock, three inches of compacted gravel. For roads only being used for residential activity. In section four twelve C B. Page thirty-five, recommend change in the text to commensurate expense and responsibility, thereby not requiring a landowner that uses ten percent of a road length. To pay equally with the landowner that uses a hundred percent of the. Private road length. In section five oh three. Page thirty-seven to thirty-eight, there should be a design requirement for emergency egress in land development proposals, especially in rural areas that are. At an elevated risk to natural disasters such as fire and flood. In section five oh eight. B D, page, on page twenty-one, forty-one, shared access limited to lengths to lengths of no more than hundred twenty-five. Feet appears arbitrary and greatly limits left flexibility for larger parcels that may want to share a driveway. Section seven oh four B, page fifty-two, should require that the stormwater pollution prevention plan be updated and submitted for approval if construction occurs beyond the planned season in the original plan. And it looks like I'm out of time, so. Uh, I did send this via email. Uh, after one o'clock today, sorry about that, but it's uh, I've been kind of stretched with a lot of things, so thank you for the opportunity to comment.
All right, thank you, ma'am, that was going to be my question is, did we uh, see this via email? As it must have been today, I'm going to guess we haven't yet, it's probably sitting in staff's email box and they'll have to share it with us. Um, but understand I will, I will look at all of your questions, I was trying to write them down, but you were way too fast, well.
I knew I had to be fast.
Ho- hopefully you have them all written down and I can look at them in the email.
Yes, you will be able to, yeah, the letter is in the email, so you've got that.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am, any uh, anybody else online have citizen comment for or against the Title Twelve Road Standards as presented? Um, not seeing one, so let's go back in the room, does anybody in the room? Have any testimony for or against the Title Twelve Road Standards as they are presented today? We'll sing. Um, so we'll go last call for anybody in the room or online that has citizen comment and hasn't had an opportunity to speak, now is your last chance. Please provide your name. Uh, and give comment. I'm seeing none, so with that, I will uh, open the opportunity for my seatmates to request clarification. Of any of the public statements they heard. Uh, as well as ask questions of staff if they so deem appropriate. Any? Seeing none. Um. One last call for citizen comment. Anybody online or in the room have citizen comment for the Title Twelve Road Standards? And I'm seeing none. Um, with that, I will declare the public hearing is now. Continued. Uh, to six P M, August first, two thousand twenty-three, at the Clickatuck County Services Building in Goldendale, which is here. Um. And we'll move on to the next public here.
I don't think we can. We can't move on to the next public hearing.
Why?
Because it was advertised for two thirty.
Oh, that's true, it's two thirty, so we have to wait a half an hour. So with that, um, we will start the next public hearing at two thirty. Um, if my seatmates want to pay the bills, pay some of the pay estimates, so we're getting that out of the way, we can get that done in the next half an hour, we will start the next public hearing promptly at two thirty.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with two items, maybe the fewest we've ever had.
Maybe. Maybe.
And I will second.
We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda with two items. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda with two items, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Accounts payable?
Sure.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of. Five hundred thou- five hundred and one thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and two cents and the payroll. Benefit warrants in the amount of one million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixteen cents. For the date ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second to pay the bills. Any discussion on paying the bills? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Uh, Chairman, I would make a motion to, for approval of the first and final pay estimate of nineteen thousand for the S W C. Bickleton area to provide pulverizing of the existing H M A B S T road surface, one foot deep on the Bickleton Highway. Between milepost twenty-five point one two and milepost twenty-seven point two six. Also, East and West Market Street, West Coast Soil Solutions, Inc. was the lowest of the three response bidders with a total bid amount of nineteen thousand dollars. Project costs are included in the twenty twenty-three road fund one oh one. And my motion is to approve this pay estimate.
And I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion to second to approve, uh, the pay estimate, first and final. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an eye over there.
Oh, aye.
Okay, three ayes. And say, maybe she's supposed, had to check. That kind of wraps up regular business anyway. Before we start the next public hearing, do either of my seatmates or staff need a recess?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, well. I mean, if we're not starting until one thirty, um, let's go fifteen minutes. Um, so we will recess for fifteen minutes. We will come back at two fifteen.
Thank you.
All right, it is two fifteen. We are gonna call the meeting back to order. But we are not going to take any action, so continue your conversations. Yep, that works. So Google it on your. Google. And behave yourself. That's all I have. My only recommendation is behave yourself. Give your order. Want to stick your note to write it on?
Oh, oh, yes.
You got a sticky. I was trying to let that box of note card over there. I inherited those from Jim and I passed them on to you. Yeah, you're the last man standing there, duh. I pray to pass left and right for things that are missed, but one of those we all kind of need to look. Or a sticker got removed. Does your agenda for today have tabs? Do you have tabs or am I just missing it? I probably gotta download it first. Well, you gotta download it first. That's the catch that I just realized why I'm having a problem. I'm hoping there's a hearing thing in there. The other thing for staff that I'll point out is anytime we have a hearing. Can we make sure there's one of these procedural sequences for each hearing in the packet? So I don't have to try to make words. Drive, I can just. There you go.
Yeah.
Cause it's like now I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be combining these two as I read. Well, times like this make me wish the, the wire wasn't all coiled up, so we could just grab one and yank it over there. If you can make it work, that would be good, cause they don't need two mics down there at the table right now. And just center that mic down there and it can be in the middle of the table. Perfect. And by the way, we might need to buy a battery tester on Amazon for five bucks, cause I want to know how many batteries we throw away that aren't back. As I said, we need to come up with a different alternative and that, if that's having them add a third cable. That we can just keep that mic over here and undo the plug and plug it in over here and buy another mic for over here, that. That little temporary one's just gotta go. Alrighty, we are close enough. If I can get everybody's attention, I think the. I think the way we're going to, uh, start this thing is start with a, uh, planning director, kind of an update on where we are in this whole process. Uh, where, what the potentials are of where it goes from here and whatnot, and that way better educate you guys on where we're actually at. Before we actually open the public hearing. So with that, I will.
Good afternoon. My name is Mo Chi Lin Blatt. I'm the Planning Director. Um, I'm gonna give you an update about the large-scale industrial solar, um, regulations update. Where we at and all that. Um, we have been having planning commission workshops, uh, for the last few months. So the last one we had was in June this year. At that particular workshop, planning commission has, um, recommend. Uh, planning departments to prepare, uh, propose amendment to the zoning ordinance. And go through the formal public process, which include public comments and public hearing before the planning commission. Have a recommendation, they will bring back to the county commissioners for their legislative actions. And that particular process will actually change the county zoning ordinance. So we will potentially have new solar regulations, um, in our zoning ordinance. Um, that's where we at. Um, staff will be start working on that process again. Um, so we will be working on the C P A process as well as making. Uh, amendment to the zoning code and have that document ready for the public to comment on it. Is that?
That'll do it. So technically what we're doing here today in this hearing is the Board of Commissioners felt it prudent. Uh, based on what it was hearing from the planning commission, that there could be potential changes coming to our zoning. So this board took emergency action and put interim zoning in. Uh, that would put the kibosh on anybody sneaking a permit in before the planning commission gets done. Doing whatever recommendation they're gonna do. So this hearing today is. By law, we have a certain amount of time that we have to have a public hearing after we make that emergency, uh, interim zoning. And this is your chance to either speak in favor of or opposed to this board continuing that emergency zoning. Uh, that we already put in place. Um, so that should pretty much explain it. Uh, with that, I will declare the public hearing open, uh, by advising that the purpose of this hearing is to get your comment pro or against. Uh, the continuation of the interim zoning ordinance zero zero six, one, three, two, three. Uh, in interim official controls prohibiting large-scale solar projects over one acre in size located in township ranges. Three fourteen, three fifteen, three sixteen, four fourteen, four fifteen, four sixteen, four seventeen, five fifteen, five sixteen, five seventeen. In Clickedec County, Washington, for all of these that don't know those townships and ranges that pretty much incorporates everything in the Golden Hills and the Real Valley. Um, with that, we kind of just did have a staff update between the two of us. Uh, so I will declare the public hearing open to citizen comment. Explaining once again, please be civil. Um, somebody else testifying might have a different opinion than you, but that doesn't make him the enemy. Uh, we can all voice our opinions. Uh, and make educated decisions from our opinions, so please be civil, please don't clap, please don't shout. Um, it really affects people that are, that are hard of hearing and by all means, if you can't hear us do something like this. Um, and get our attention so we can speak closer to the mic like I just did. Um, please state your name and address for the record. Again, you will have three minutes and to start this public hearing, I would like to start it a little differently. If anybody is, um, handicapped and wants to go first, or if they have a meeting to go to or a baseball game or anything else. Um, and they wanna go first, please raise your hand and we'll take you before we take everybody else. I'm not seeing one online or anyone else. So with that, we will open it to anybody, public hearing for or against continuation of the interim zoning chains. Um, if you have comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Actually, we'll go in the room first. Uh, yeah, grab the sign up sheets. Anybody on the sign up sheet? All right, come on forward, come to the mic so everybody on Zoom land can hear you. You're gonna have to come down to this table if you want to speak. Yep, you were, I thought you raised your hand, maybe not. Maybe I'm just calling random people out of the audience, I don't know. Uh, didn't just state your name and, and general location in the county. If you live in the county for the record, make sure that little light's green. And then your clock's up there, sir, whenever you want to start.
Okay, Richard T. Goldendale, Washington. I, I would like to say I am one hundred percent behind this. But, I'm gonna add, but. I think that you should run it all the way out to Rock Creek on the east side. There's a lot of people out there and they're against it. And there's a lot of good farmland too. And that's what we're talking about protecting. So if you're running it out as far as Rock Creek, it's kind of, kind of a compromise for these people. In a way. And that's about all I have to say except. Thank you, commissioners for being here today, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I was trying to see if I can find our map that shows how far what area it actually covers. But. We'll just move on. Does anybody else in the room? Have comment for us. There'll be chances later if you want to wait for more people to talk other than you. Come on forward, sir.
I'm Carl Lammert on. My address is two oh two Knight Road. Been there for seventy two years. I've listened to all this stuff. And I've listened to people to say how dumb the landowners are. And I just finally today I had enough. I thought I'd come to town. Say a few things. Private property rights, number one. Private property rights. Now, when all these people move here that are against this. The solar panels. And I'm really not that much in favor of solar panels, but I am in favor of private property rights. And these people make a decision. Informed decision, they looked at the contracts, they know what's in front of them. They make a decision, a business decision to keep their farm ground. In their family. So what's going to happen? You stop the solar panels from coming in. Now you have to stop the subdivisions from coming. If these people want to save ag, and that's what everybody says, we've got to save the ag land. Well. You've got to stop subdivision. For instance, I have a landowner, a family of four. They're all absentee landowners. They just got an offer, a huge offer for their land. So they came to me and they said, you want to match this offer? I looked at him and I had a heart attack. But they will keep it in the family if they can get. Four or five hundred acres of solar panels. Now that's. I realize that's what people don't want to see, but it might save that family farm. There's going to be another thousand acres that's not going to have solar panels. So there's other thing, you know, there's, there's more things you got to think about than just, oh, God, I don't want to look at them. We're trying to make a living out here. And we looked at these contracts and I've been there for seventy two years and. It would take a lot of pressure off. We've been under the gun since I started farming. Every year, we're going to make enough money to pay the bills. We love Clickattack County. I was raised here. I raised my family here. Now my grandkids are here. And now we have people moving in. And the first thing they do is they put a private property sign on their driveway. But they don't want to acknowledge our private property rights. It might be on a little bigger piece of twenty acres or five acres. But that's where I'm coming from and I've. I guess I just had enough. I had to come to town today. It's cool, it's cool in here anyway.
I'm glad you did come to town today, sir, because your voice is just as important as everybody sitting in the room. So thank you for coming. I will stay in the room with one more. If anybody else in the room, go ahead and come forward, sir. And then name and general location for the record.
Dennis Schroder, three, six, three Rimrock Road in Goldendale. I just want to say that I am a proponent for the interim ordinance that you have written. I looked it over. It, it looks like you're addressing. Things correctly as far as. We covered a lot of the ground that are the. Subjects that needed to be covered. So anyway, I appreciate you. Doing something to slow down the solar growth. Anyway, but that's, that was my main comment regarding the. As I have said before, that I am also a proponent of the. I'd rather see the land turned into rural residential than I would turn it into solar. And I'm not going to go over all the reasons because we've. We've had that out, but I'm also a long time family farm that. That's kind of been, been our answer to doing something with the property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll take a little break from in the room and go online. If anybody online, there's forty five people. If any of you have public comment for or against keeping the interim ordinance prohibiting large scale solar in the aforementioned area. Please raise your hand or get our attention. I'm not seeing any, so we will come back to you. Online if you're some. Heather, did you unmute yourself? I don't see any fluctuation on her mics. I just don't think it's. Working. Guess not. We'll go back in the room. Anybody else in the room, Mr. Eldred?
Delmar Eldred, Goldendale, Washington. I just want to say that I'm in favor of the interim zoning prohibiting solar in the townships and ranges that you guys have specified in the moratorium. And that's all.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the room have a comment for or against keeping the interim zoning ordinance? Come on forward. If there's two of you, you can both come forward. There's two chairs. Are we sending you on your own? Just don't cry on me.
I won't. It's starting.
Okay, thank you. I can't take it today.
Me neither. My name's Deborah Wagner. I live in Goldendale. I support the continuation of the interim zoning for the prohibition of large scale scale solar. In the townships called out in the solar moratorium. My reasons would be safety, health and welfare of the people. That's all I have. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. You didn't. I'm proud of you.
Greg Wagner was cease. I too support the continuation of the interim zoning for the prohibition of large scale solar development. In the townships called out in the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go back online. Does anybody online have any comment for or against the interim ordinance, keeping the interim ordinance? I see one. Diana Bambi, go ahead. There she goes.
Meanwhile, to get to my, I'm mute. I also, well, Dinah Bambi, I live at twenty two seventy four highway one forty one in Trout Lake, Washington. I also in support of the interim zoning prohibition on large scale solar projects, but also want to comment that. We really need to have a common sense approach to how solar projects are designed. Approved and implemented and hope that the planning department is mindful of that in that, you know. The developments I think are needed from an energy perspective. But having some common sense and in terms of scope and, and scale is really important to be. Attentive to that in our, in our planning process. This concludes my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else online have citizen comment for? This hearing, buddy? Okay, we'll go back in the room. Anybody else has not had comment that would like to make comment? There's a lot of you in here. Don't make me start pointing at people. Come on forward. Said I shut you off during the other one this morning, so I, you get all your time you want. Another three minutes.
Well, as a farmer born on farm and stuff, farming is close to my heart. But also is my neighbors and I have twenty acres. I could have solar panels on it. I'm poor. It'd be nice, but I love my neighbors. I couldn't do it to them. And yes, we have property rights. But if they stop when you harm your neighbor, I could put a pig farm. I think there's about fifteen houses around me. Would they appreciate that? No, I couldn't do it to my neighbor. So. I also support the interim zoning for the. Prohibition of hard scale development in the townships called out in the solar moratorium. Thank you.
I have a quick question for you, ma'am, if I might. How long have you lived here?
Forty seven years.
Thank you. Back in the room. Anybody else in the room that have not made comment that would like to make comment and I'll go back online if I don't see a hand. I don't see a hand. We'll go back online. Anybody online have? Comment for or against continuation of the interim zoning ordinance? Prohibiting large scale solar in the Golden Hills and Real Valley. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Being none. We'll go back in the room. Anybody else in the room have a citizen? Come on forward. You started listening to the clock going tick tock. Nobody's going to speak, tick tock. Name and general location, sir?
Dave Bart, a Goldendale. Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today in support of interim controls on industrial solar in the moratorium area. I appreciate our present board's desire to hear the citizens enact in their interest. You've probably noticed, but it's been a long road. You know, on November sixth of twenty eighteen, then Commissioner Sotter asked Planning Director Lynn Blad, quote. If the E O Z treats solar projects the same as wind projects. Director Lynn Blad's response was, quote, the E O Z allows solar but doesn't address regulations specific to solar. Near the end of that November sixth twenty eighteen minute meeting, the minute state, quote, discussion continued regarding updating the E O Z to encourage solar developers to. To locate in less populated areas, end quote. I have to ask, would we like where we are now better if that board had done what they themselves said they needed to do? But here we are dozens of commissioner meetings with testimony opposed industrial solar petition with over three hundred citizens signing it. Opposing solar in the moratorium area, which was largely disregarded by the prior board, two moratorium repeated hearings, FSEC meetings and hearings, et cetera. This is what happens when a can is kicked down the road. Basically. It's crushed by an irresistible force, having greater mass inertia and momentum. I sincerely thank this board for no longer kicking it down the road so it can be crushed by industrial solar developers. Thank you for picking up the can to do something with it. A couple of weeks ago, we had a fire, you might have noticed that burned from Knight Road to Pine Forest, and then it jumped that road. Frank, Frank Laird truck was chasing it on the south flank. I thought we'd lost Ponderosa Park. I don't even can't even believe we didn't lose Ponderosa Park. And I started making calls to friends there to tell them to get out immediately. Having seen a few wildland fires of this type, I thought it would go all the way to pipeline, maybe ninety seven. The property across which the fire burned is purportedly optioned by D N R to inv energy for industrial solar. Had that installation been in place with hundreds of north south solar panel racks slung with panels. Our dozer would have been severely hampered and would have had to stay out of the solar area. Essentially, it would have come out on Pine Forest Road twice as wide as it was. We would, I know we wouldn't have caught it if that was the case. It's precisely why the twenty eighteen Board of Commissioners stated they needed to encourage development in less populated areas, but once more they kicked the can. Again, thank you for picking up the can. Thank you for passing ordinance oh zero six eight two three and holding this commensurate hearing. For the sake of local citizens, please continue the present ordinance and enjoy in a process to place permanent prohibition on industrializing the moratorium area with large scale solar. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You put some time into that one and it's very much appreciated. We'll stay in the room since online doesn't want to play. Does anybody else in the room have citizen comment for the board of commissioners? On this hearing, seeing none, we'll go back online. Does anybody online have public comment for or against? Continuation of the interim zoning ordinance? In case you came in late prohibiting large scale solar development, the Golden Dale and Centerville Valley. Again, seeing none. We'll go back to the room. Anybody in the room have citizen comment? For or against? Come on forward, sir.
My name's Ronchi. I live at the bottom of one forty two mile post nineteen point.
Last name again, sir?
Just one, Ronchi, R A U N C H Y. I'm, I like the idea of this new thing you got going with the moratorium. I don't know why it took so long to do it. My reasoning is real simple. I don't want to drive through all those panels all the time. Quite often, if we leave Goldendale, we'll take Fairgrounds Road, go up Knight Road, pine. Pine Forest Road and get down that way. I don't want to see all that stuff out there. We've lived here for forty three years. We moved here because of the countryside. Most people are moving here. If you ask them why, they'll say because it's beautiful. We love the country. So let's not tear it up and destroy it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't know. Let's stay in the room since online doesn't want to play very well. Anybody else in the room that has not had an opportunity to comment for or against the continuation of the interim zoning? We'll go back online. Anybody online have comment for or against the interim zoning? Russ, go ahead, sir.
Yes, Russ Hanson, Goldendale. Just like to thank you for this opportunity to testify. Again, I believe for this is the fourth time now.
Yeah.
You guys are.
The process is long, sir.
Yes, appreciate taking the, the bull by the horns this time. I'd just like to echo a bunch of Dave Bart's comments. And I'm glad that the planning commission finally. Got together and did some of this and I'd just like to say that I'm fully in support of the. Continuation of the interim zoning ordinance for the prohibition of large scale solar and main reasons is because we can't afford to lose our. Precious ag land. And the second is that. Population density in the Golden Dale and the Centerville Valleys. Changed tremendously over the last twenty years and it's just not the right place for large scale solar. And thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Anybody else online have comment for or against continuation of the interim zoning? I'm seeing that. Back in the room. Everybody not come forward.
I do. I feel like this has been such a long road, guys. It's been long. It's been long, but the fight's been worth it. So I support this ordinance, the interim. Oh, zero six one three two three. I especially support. The preservation of the public health, safety and general welfare. Yeah, that's important. When you guys got my email about another solar battery fire last Thursday in New York. They happen, you know, people want to convince us this is new green, great. And the more we educate ourselves, the more we see we're being frauded. We're taking minerals and we're doing all sorts of things. We're making glass. We're making blades with fiberglass. Who knows what we're doing? Meanwhile, we want to take out turbines out of water that flows twenty four seven. You know, where's our common sense anymore? I wanted to believe in new green things, but you know, we're being frauded. We're just being frauded and. Our little county can say no, we can say no. our little county can say no. We can say no. We can say not here. No, thank you. Go somewhere else. It'll buy it. Where you have more commissioners like Commissioner Anderson that'll help you get it through. So I appreciate you two commissioners seeing that solar is not going to shop here. It's not going to pay property taxes. In fact, it's going to depreciate. We know that. We already know that. All renewable energies depreciate eight and a half percent each year and then it shifted to the people. Then you get to take more out of our wallets and our property taxes go up and ourselves taxes go up and our electric rates go up. So how's it good for us? It's not private property rights. All right, sounds great. Can I build a Walmart? How about I build a big resort on the side of the White Salmon River? And we can just dump the sewage in it and everything like that. Can I do that? It's my property. I have seven hundred feet on the White Salmon River. Why don't I put a store there? You know, just dump all that stuff in there. I'll do some chemical stuff. I can't do that. You guys are telling me, no, you can't even touch fifty feet from the high watermark. That's what you tell me. It's my property. But I can't do whatever I want and we won't put this the rest. So the reason why we're here is because that's ag land. It's ag land. It's not industrial land and we all know what it takes. We've seen Bickleton. We have the largest solar array in state of Washington. We see what it looks like. We see what they do to put them in. They strip the top soil. They have to pound these posts in the ground and now you have nothing but black glaring glass for miles. Look out there when you're driving into town and you tell me, one more time, I'm going to tell you, I climb up Bird Creek Meadows. I go to Hurricane Ridge. And you can stand up there and you can look out all over Glenwood, all the way to the Sim Coast to, you go up there one day and look out there and imagine you looking at nothing but black glaring glass because I've done it. We don't want this. Thank you for this interim. I support it.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for being respectful of the clock. Uh, we'll stay in the room. Anybody else not had a chance that wants a chance? Pro or against either way? All right, we'll go back online. Anybody online have a comment for the board pro or against the continuation of the interim zoning ordinance? To prohibit large scale solar in the Goldendale and Centerville Valleys? If you have comment for or against, now is your time. Amy's phone.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I would just like to say I support the interim zoning ordinance for the prohibition or ban of large scale industrial solar development within the townships listed in the current solar moratorium. Majority of these areas are currently actively farmed or wildlife corridors and have a large number of residential homes. These areas should not be zoned to allow thousands of acres of industrial solar panels surrounded by chain link fencing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else online have comment pro or against the interim zoning controls? Not seeing it. I'll go back in the room one more time. Anybody else not, Jim Hill, go ahead.
Hello? Um. Also. Right over. Thirty, no, thirty-one.
Sir, Mr. Hill, your audio is breaking up really bad. If you turn off your video, your audio should work better.
Okay, well, sorry.
Yep, now try that and let's see.
Sorry. Okay, how's that?
Yep, I can hear you much better now, sir.
Okay, Jimmy. Third, Jimmy, all thirty-one fifteen highway one forty-two. And I've, I've said this before several times, but I keep hearing preserve the farmland, preserve the farmland. My four hundred and fifty acres, more or less, would be involved in this uh, project. You know, I don't know and that, I don't know what my grandkids are going to do with it when I, when I'm gone and they you know, get control of the land, but there, there could conceivably be twenty-one houses on that four hundred acres. And each house is going to have a well into the aquifer. What's that gonna do to the aquifer? And I can tell you from my experience that a twenty acre parcel is not a farm. And it will not be farmland. And it will not be pretty like we have now. Because of twenty-one houses. And trust me, it'll all sell. With this solar panel project, yes, it changes for a while. But in twenty years or maybe thirty, it's gone and what we have left, farmland. It's back and probably better than ever. So all this talk about preserving farmland is, is uh, you know, bogus. The only way, the best way to preserve this farmland is endure the solar panels for twenty years and then it's back. All this stuff is gone. They have to return it to the to the way it is today. It's in the contract. And I'm just, I'm tired of, because when these people come in from out of town by twenty acres, where do they put their house? On farmland. And it's not going to get farmed anymore. If it is, it's not going to be like it is now, trust me. So anyway, that's all I have to say. You know, for against the moratorium is as long as whatever the planning department comes up with. It's probably going to be okay. I don't know. I'll have to wait and see what they, what they come up with. Anyway. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. And that actually brings up a good clarification that I can mention that we probably should have mentioned when we gave you the little update beforehand. The Planning Commission, when they work out whatever recommendation they're going to work out, will make that recommendation to the Planning Director. She will pass on that recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners can adopt it. They can modify it or they can do something completely different than what the Planning Commission recommended. Uh, so just so everybody's well aware of that. Um, with that, let's stay online. Anybody else online? We're about out of people in the room, but we'll give them another chance here in a second before we call us call. Anybody online have public comment for or against the continuation of the interim zoning? Seeing none. Back in the room. Anybody not spoken that wants to speak? Seeing nothing in the room either. So um, does the board have any clarifications of anyone's comments that they've made? Also, any questions they can ask of staff that they heard today? Do you, do my teammates have any of those? No, no. And I don't as well. Um, so we'll go last call for public comment um, until six o'clock tonight. Uh, I see a a Walker with her hand up. Do you have public comment for the board on pro or against whether we keep the interim zoning ordinance for large scale solar development of the Goldendale and Centerville Valleys?
No, sir. Sorry, I thought it was a general call for comments. Can you direct me when, when I'll be able to make a general public comment?
General public comment is during citizen comment every Tuesday between one o'clock and one twenty-five.
Will there be another opportunity today?
Uh, nope. Today we are just doing public comment for the two hearings we have and then we'll have continuation of these two hearings at six o'clock tonight. We'll, where we'll be receiving comment from anybody that has not spoken uh, during the one thirty hearings. Um, with that, we will continue to say anybody else who has not had comment, this is your last opportunity during this hearing. Um, if you have not spoken, if you want to hold eight and speak at the one later this evening, that's fine too. Last call. Not seeing it. Um, any other discussion by the board? Hearing none. Uh, in conclusion, I will state that the, the record of the public hearing is now continued until six P M. August first, two thousand and twenty-three at the Clickattack County Services Building in Goldendale, which is where we are currently at. We will have it uh, again, online and in person if you haven't spoke or if you just want to attend. Um, and then afterwards, I'm sure you would. Uh, you can probably count on more discussion from the board than you got at the end of this one. So with that, thank you, everybody for showing up. Your, your voices do matter, both sides. And we'll give everybody a second in case anybody wants to leave before we move on with our general business. They got no padding on them. Here. Mics are hot, just so you know. Yep, enjoy, sir. Right?
Thank you.
We'll know what that is six months from now and hindsight kicks. I don't know what else we really have unless you want to get into discussions of something else. Cause we're kind of off in the board pending land. Except HR just showed up. I want to give everybody a second to clear the room without kicking them out. That's all it took for him to go. He's like. And we bring her in to throw bricks at me once in a while. Did you figure out time? They just told me. I wrote it down. Okay. Alrighty. Um, I don't mind the conversation going on back there. It's pretty quiet. Does anybody, any members of the board, do the staff have any questions for us? Or have anything pertinent they need to bring up before we get to later on next meeting? Uh, commissioners, do you have any other commissioner updates that we haven't already discussed? Um, haven't already covered or? Mike.
We are still looking for another applicant for the Bridge Commission for an alternate position.
Did the alternates we had not choose to alter?
One, one person chose to not sit, be seated.
As an.
Is there any district they need to be from, Jake? Is there any district they need to be just countywide?
Anywhere.
Okay. Okay.
No, I, I would say countywide, but I would think they need to have some kind of interest in the bridge, some kind of knowledge in the bridge.
Okay.
Some kind of knowledge of engineering or architectural or trucking or.
Right. What we'd really like is someone with a finance background.
Finance background. That makes sense. I'm assuming this not having this person doesn't necessarily hold up business. It's just would be nice to have them in case they're needed scenario.
Um, it'd be nice to have someone with the finance background that can grow with the bridge as the project moves forward.
Makes sense. Okay, anything else uh, for the good of the order or shall we recess?
I mean, we got these guys.
Oh, yeah. H R, sorry. Two seconds ago I had you and then I lost you.
Sometimes it's good to be ignored, but two things. This system is set up on two point four gigahertz. It kind of sounds like Back of the Future. Um, only three vendors make microphones will work in this system. This one is the cheapest of the three and it's expensive. So we're getting quotes on the other two. But whatever we go to replace that mic or any mic has to work within the
Right.
the transmitters on this system. So that's the delay. We, we found out from the vendor that we can do it, how we can do it. We just now are trying to get quotes on the the limited options for equipment to replace it.
Right. I wouldn't mind a quote on adding another cable and getting another fixed mic. Because half the time the presenters are sitting at that table when they're trying to use a mic.
Okay.
Um, it still would be nice to have a mic to pass around the audience. I just don't know how much that's used versus literally sitting at that table. So.
So you would use that table or do you use that table for the public to make presentation?
No, I'm saying when we're in finance or like Moshe just did or that's most of the time when that mic gets used.
Yeah.
It's not being handled around the room. We make them come forward. So part of me wants to be safe. With the dollars we spend and buy something we know works versus buy another expensive mic that may not work.
Okay.
I mean, that's just me. So I'd like to have a price quote for both.
We can do that. And then finally, this morning you were talking about the insurance premium and potentially changing the deductible. So we had between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-eight claims. Um, paid claims, but over sixty filed claims. We had thirteen claims that were under ten thousand dollars, fourteen claims that were above twenty-five thousand dollars and one claim that was in the middle. And so it would make sense to change our deductible or raise it to twenty-five thousand. The insurance company already got back to me with it. It would be a savings of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. Basically drop our premium for, this is for liability now. Uh, from nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, six forty-five to nine hundred and forty-six thousand, four sixty-nine. Then I would suggest or recommend, this may be a budget issue, should you do that, that you consider taking that twenty-six thousand dollars and putting it in non-departmental or someplace to offset covering some of these smaller claims that we have to pay out of our pocket or the county has to pay or reimburse the insurance carrier. So might be, it's a small way to be self insured for the smaller claims. Uh, Commissioner Christopher and I were talking, if you do that over a course of time, then you know, that could build up and fully cover, fully cover small claims.
So that is essentially what the pool is doing and building up essentially a fund balance. That is what my hope is this county does. Um, that's what we were talking about with the finance people and Pam from Public Works this morning. Um, to hopefully, they can set aside part of their insurance savings into their own little V R and R type of account. Uh, for when they do need to cover something or roll a dump truck or, or whatever, they have the money set aside to do it based on their savings of insurance premiums. Um, according to the presentation from Rob, the difference between if we went from ten thousand deductible to twenty-five thousand dollar deductible and save fifteen thousand a year for ten years, that's a hundred and fifty grand. We were only in that range with a claim once. So to me, it makes cost effective sense to up our deductible to twenty-five, but not necessarily take that savings and throw it in our general fund and use it on payroll. Uh, but to set it aside and build ourselves our own little insurance um, fund for when we gravel a truck or hit a rock on S R fourteen.
And you wouldn't have to feed it indefinitely. You just, we could set a limit of, we want to get up to a hundred thousand dollars or seventy-five thousand dollars and, and then you know, should that drop down or when that drops down.
Feed it again for eight or two.
So, but anyway, that, that may or may not. So but anyway, that that may or may not be a budget. So were the commissioners like me to notify the insurance carrier or you wanted to just? Bring it back next week for an action or do you okay, just? Now's the time to tell them because they're getting ready to set for the.
Yeah, they're getting ready to send policies out and that's kind of this is something that's been on my radar for a while. And I I know enough about it that I feel that I can make the decision today, but if you guys want to chew on it longer. Talk to finance or anything else. I totally understand it, but we probably should get an answer by next week. So that we can get them to write policies in the correct dollar amount. If we change.
And what to do with the twenty-six thousand dollars possibly a second discussion, raise the deductible and then what to do with the savings.
But if if we are going to put it aside. This is another one of those kick the can down the road things. We need to make that decision this year or not. Planet, no, let's spend it on something and then hope to get it back.
I just meant on that one, we could talk to Jen and maybe it's the first workshop if we needed to talk about. How much and where and how in the auditor in the treasure, but anyway, but.
I mean, if it makes good financial sense and and you have small claims and you don't have anything in the middle, I don't see a problem with it. Whether we create a self self financed pool or whatever, it's all the same money. It's just a color of money that we're artificially creating. We've got the reserve side of the house. And that's in essence what you're doing anyways. You're just creating another. Bars number with reserve that hopefully we're getting interest on. So I don't know if we need to do that. I'd like, you know, the twenty thousand dollars be going into reserves. But I don't know what this budget is going to look like and we might need that money for something else. Like one claim.
Yes, no, I mean, that you you have points, sir. So I would say this breaks down into two questions. Does it? Does the board feel it makes good financial sense to jump at twenty-five grand? And that's one decision. And then we can always broach the what do we do with the savings as we go through the budget process.
Yes, that makes sense to me. Yeah, because my only concern would be what we're doing with that money. And if we do create that reserve that it doesn't end up somewhere else or we can't fund it eventually because we siphon it off for in the future.
And that's challenge big counties have ever where I've ever been is if they sell if their deductibles a quarter of a million or half a million. You know, and they build up a five hundred thousand dollar account or million dollar account offset that self insurance level. Takes a lot of discipline not to dip into that when times get tough. So but this at this case, you know, we're still very, very low deductible. Most of the counties in the pool are higher than we are where so.
And I would imagine I already talked to Jen and finance. I'd imagine. We would, as we go through the budget, we would talk about the V R and R on the fleet vehicles and what we do with those funds. And that's kind of the same avenue. So it makes sense to just say yes to upping the deductible. And cover the rest of it as we go through the process.
Sounds good.
I think that's all three of us. Yeah.
Yes, on the deductible and then the rest be discussed or continue. Okay. I'll notify the carrier. Thank you.
Are you? Thank you for being so quick and timely on this.
Didn't he say there were two things?
Yeah, didn't you say there was two things and that was just one of them? Oh, first one was a microphone.
Are you going to get the Avidex to take that microphone back? And give us a refund on it?
No, it's past the warranty. They they actually came down on site once and tested it for a whole day and said it worked fine. So. Literally, and more than once every time they were here, they'd turn it on, set it aside and they'd leave and sit still on. So. I don't know.
Then again, my phone still works fine too.
That's why. That's why I don't want to get another of this brand. Though this is a high quality brand. I just I want to completely change it out.
But it's kind of me. That's why I want a wired mic. We know these work. I'll string another cable.
Yeah, but I can ask, we can ask. I doubt they'll take it back, but.
Doesn't hurt to ask. They've said they've done their part and that was.
We might they might give us trade in value or something anyway. Here we give you seventy-eight cents towards the purchase of a five hundred dollar mic.
Trust me, we'd love to get this fixed just as much as you'd like us to get it fixed. Thank you.
Alrighty, any other staff questions? I know she heard us talking. I I wasn't. Putting you on the spot today. If that's what you were hearing. Okay. So we made the decision to up our insurance deductible from ten thousand, twenty-five thousand. Which will save fifteen thousand a year. Twenty-six thousand a year. We've already made that decision. The question is, what do we want to do with the twenty-six thousand a year? Do we want to just? Spend it in other things and. Not set it aside or in some way set up some kind of a. Fund or pool or something to cover. The car damage that we get that we no longer are insured for. So those are questions we needed to kind of hammer out in the budget process. Kind of the same as our V R and R fund for the fleet vehicles that may not be being replaced. But have fun balance. What are we going to do with those things? So I figured it's all kind of the same question. So. Anything else? Any other electeds or anybody online have anything for us? Before we recess till this afternoon? Hearing none, seeing none. There are no seatmates, so I would entertain a motion for recess.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to recess of until six P M. This evening for two public hearings.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to recess until six P M. This evening. With that, I would mention that we do have a budget workshop this Thursday for anybody not tuning in this evening. That is in person only. Come on down to the room. With that, we have motion and second to recess and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of recess, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We are recessed until six o'clock.
Our name being the video holds in our. Will also be declared that this public hearing is now open. First thing we'll be covering is the Title twelve road standards. Acknowledging testimony to the floor against the developer proposed Title twelve transportation standard. Will start with the staff update.
Okay, we'll make this brief. The original Title twelve standards are transportation standards used for development. They do regulate what the county also does on their projects. We have to match what the standards are. The original standards were adopted in two thousand and four. Time has come to update the standards. That's what this process is. We had a we we put together a committee back. And our first meeting was in April, two thousand and twenty-one. So we've been working on this for two years. This is a long. This is quite a long process. The committee was made up of fourteen citizens, including public, including a person from planning and two people from public works. The committee, like I said, met over the next two years. And the standards have grown just because things have grown as everybody's aware of. We live in a state where we have a lot of different regulations and they keep growing every year. For instance, and the standards, the old standards were forty-three pages. This is a hundred and twenty-six. The main things that were done, the goals of this were to cover stuff that weren't in the old standards. To clear up discrepancies. And to define differences between public and private roads. Items that were added to the standards that we actually did work with, but. Nothing was written down on where franchise agreements, stormwater. Stuff, road vacancies, right away donation, large industrial development. A variance process and performance guarantees. I'd like to thank the committee. They spent a lot of time and effort over the two years. They provided a lot of research and looked up a lot of things and. They also, at the very beginning of the project, our very beginning, when we started, we we asked not to bring projects, personal projects to the committee. That was not part of this committee or part of the standards. I'll ask the same thing of the public. If you have questions about a personal project, you can contact Public Works. We will discuss that. With that, I will turn it over.
Okay, thank you, sir. With that, we'll open the public hearing to comment either for or against the adoption of this proposed Title twelve transportation standards. I would like to remind the public to please be civil. Different people testifying might be testifying as the opposite belief you are, but that doesn't make them the devil. Give them the common courtesy that you would expect. Also, no cheering, no clapping. Again, we have people that have trouble hearing and it's kind of disrespectful to the people testifying. If they're being. Overpowered by clapping. So the first meeting went off great. I expect this will be fine too. At the start of your testimony, please state your name and general location for the record. And make sure you tell us during your testimony, even if you have three minutes in there that you're either for or against. There'll be a clock on the screen up there hopefully this time. And we'll go with that. So we'll start with anybody in the room. Does anybody in the room here? We'll end up doing Title twelve first and then we'll do solar right after. If you're here to provide a comment either for or against the Title twelve road standards, please raise your hand or get my attention. Mister Sizemore, come on forward.
There was a sign up sheet. You have sign up sheet.
It's still out there as people are funneling in.
Jim Sizemore, rancher and farmer, Centerville, Washington, eight one nine Jaquil Lane. Thank you, Mister Chairman and Commissioners for allowing testify. I am support. Of the new formulated requirements. I do not want to go back. To what it was in the late seventies when I first moved here. There was large tracts of land that were sold to developers that. Had a D seven cat with an eight foot blade and they made the roads. They took a pencil and a straight edge and took a map of the property that they had and divided it up into ten acre parcels. And that's all they needed to do. The county inherited a horrible mess back then. Emergency responders could not find the private drives. After so many lots were sold in one particular area, the next thing that happened was. The county was being petitioned to make it a road, all weather road. And I I the county does not need to go backwards. We have some pretty good rules that really keep everybody, the public. And our people that work on the roads and the emergency responders safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the room have public comment for or against the Title twelve road standards as written? Seeing none, we'll go online. Is anybody online? There's now twenty people. We will begin, we'll be doing the solar hearing after this hearing, but is anybody online to testify about the Title twelve road standards? Either for or against. I see no one. Back in the room. Don't make Jim be here all by himself now. Still seeing none. Give it a second. Seems kind of weird to have last call for public comments so early, but. We'll kind of make it a last call either in the room or online. If you have comment for the Title twelve road standards, this is your last opportunity. Almost last. Hearing none. Okay, is there any clarification questions? From my seatmates about the public statement and or the staff update? Clarification of questions. No, okay. So now is your absolute last chance to make public comments before we close this hearing to further comment in the room or online. If you have public comments, speak now. Still seeing none. With that, I will close this public hearing to verbal comments. Written comments. We'll get to that in a minute. Discussion by the word. But if you're ready or you want me to go first, y'all just love it when I go first. Can I take all the heat off you? It would be my recommendation from this board that we. Leave written comment open. That we carry forward. And have a workshop preferably in the afternoon as the last item of the workshop. So we can go as long as we need to go. To go through this book, line item by line item, Public Works said they would be providing us with a redline copy. And make sure that we can get behind everything in it without any further changes. Before we move forward with a CPO, that would be my recommendation.
So you're. Trying to get this straight. You're wanting to add this discussion to Thursdays? Meeting this Thursday? Are they going to be able to get us a redline copy by Thursday?
I'm not ready for it by Thursday's meeting now.
Okay, so not this workshop?
This workshop.
Okay. Future workshop. That's a lot of reading.
Yep. Oh, I it's it's all right here.
Yeah.
But to me, I have to look at the testimony that was received today and go through this binder. I already obviously have all my little stickies. Of questions that I personally have. And I guess the way I look at it is kind of like Commissioner Zoller discussed earlier with the C A O. That I believe that we shouldn't just be taking a document that's delivered to us and just. Unilaterally approving it without actually looking at it. I'm not a rubber stamper. I like to get down and dirty and messy and make sure when I vote on something I can stand behind what I'm voting on. So that was kind of my recommendation before we have this public hearing, but it's still my recommendation after.
When is our next scheduled workshop? Do you know?
I was gonna say, I think they're every.
Every Thursday.
Every Thursday because we have budget, but that's why I was hoping maybe we could get it at the end. So if it takes us two hours, it takes us two hours. My biggest worry is we schedule half an hour for something because I can guarantee I'm going to need more than that.
So do you want staff to put it on the agenda at the end in a workshop two weeks, three weeks from now, which?
As long as it's not this Thursday. As long as it's not this Thursday, I don't care. That would give me, like I said, I am a little behind on my cross matching because we got the new copy a couple of weeks ago and I'm trying to look from the. The copy we had to the new copy to see what was tweaked, what was changed. And then, as you can tell, I've been kind of a little busy in the last week chasing fires around and dealing with all that that I haven't.
So with the tenth work? Yep. Would you be interested in motion?
Uh, yes, sir.
Mister Chairman, I would move.
Your hands up. Yep, I I'm sorry. I said yes, sir, without making sure my other seatmate didn't have any questions or comments.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister Chairman, I would move to close the oral comment and to leave the written comment open. And continue this discussion on Thursday, August tenth in the afternoon. Or further deliberations.
We have a second?
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. To continue this meeting to August tenth. For further deliberations during a workshop, any of you that are in. Interested in Title twelve or how we work through this process are more than welcome to attend. And it is a workshop. We usually don't have public comments on Thursdays, but if there's. People here wanting to comment on the Title twelve, I might. I might allow it when we get there. So with that. Any other discussion? All those in favor of continuing this meeting until August tenth workshop? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you both. Moving on, our next item for discussion is. Moving on, our next item for discussion is a public hearing in regards to ordinance zero zero six one three two three, which is Yep. I should have let everybody vacate, shouldn't I? I did that really well this afternoon and then I stopped today. The next item is a public hearing in regards to ordinance zero zero six one three two three interim official control prohibiting large scale solar projects over one acre in size located in township ranges three fourteen, three fifteen, three sixteen, four fourteen, four fifteen, four sixteen, four seventeen, five fifteen, five sixteen, five seventeen. In Clickitack County, Washington, and for those that are unaware of where those township ranges are, they pretty much incorporate the Golden Hill and Central Valley. We currently have interim zoning ordinance that prohibits large scale solar development. This hearing is to allow this board to decide whether it wants to continue that process. Prohibiting large scale solar development or whether it wants to amend it. With that, we will declare the public hearing open. Once again, if you have public comment, please state your name and address for the record. We will start in the room first. If you have public comment for or against and you haven't already given comment at the one thirty one thirty meeting, please come forward and give your name. And yep, there's one, there's two. Well, you gotta fight over arm wrestle.
I really don't arm wrestle that well.
And we'll, we'll end up hopping back and forth from Zoom to the room and you will be definitely noted when it's last call. So.
Dave West, Centerville. Just a real quick short story. A few years ago, there was a public official who was quite rude. Finally figured it out. He walked up to me and he says, I apologize if I offended you. I said, you can't offend me. You have no importance in my life. Keep that in mind. May twenty first, matter of fact, back up a little bit, Jim Sizemore just gave the perfect example of why we're not allowed to do anything we want with our private property at the mess that can occur. Thank you, Jim. I'm not against solar, but I do believe it has an appropriate place in our county. May twenty first, a couple of years ago, May of twenty one. Over three hundred people signed a request to the Board of County Commissioners to change the course of what they, how they were handling solar in the valley. It was ignored. We had the moratorium hearing, which you heard hundreds of people say, this is not the place. The EFSEC hearing, you're all there. You heard dozens of people, the vast majority, say, this is not the place. Finally, after over two years of feeble excuses of why it shouldn't go to the planning commission. Thank you. It went to the planning commission. A cross section of people representing the entire width of our county. Different economic, different political, different careers. After months of study and research, the vote was unanimous to borrow large scale solar from this valley. I was there for each one of their discussions. Why? We're a dense population. It puts it at risk to damage property values and risk to damage people as well as the property physically itself. No expert is needed. Those people, one of them, he made huge money helping build Lund Hill. He would have the same opportunity here. But he said, no. Money is not the principle here that we should be following. It is the lives of the people to decide how it should be. They listened to the people. They came to the conclusion from one end of the county to the other. Washington State University came out with the least conflict study. Now they ignored the social economic impact of large scale solar in their mapping and they, and even with the bias of the solar corporations calculated in, this valley mapped out as a place to avoid. Contrary to Cypress Creek, our farming range land rated as moderately high value. Our conservation needs were moderately good. Our own E O Z. There are statements in documents attached to it in revisions. The solar shall be small and few and cited to visualize minimum, to minimize the visual impact. We've all heard it, heard it today from Dave Bart about November of eighteen. Am I that done?
Wrap it, give you ten more, ten more seconds.
Okay, there's no greater betrayal to the citizens of this county if you ignore their will and it has been said. Any elected official who does not respect that, when it's over, if I want to be clear, is a disgrace to the seat in which he sits. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, who wants to follow that one? We have somebody in the room and then we'll go online when we're done with this in the room. Name and general location for the record, sir.
Thank you. Tom Holub, H O L U B. Golden Dale resident. My wife and I took a couple of years to look where we wanted to retire and we decided that the Golden Dale area was, we went all over the Northwest and loved it here, but largely because of the beautiful scenic farmland that you see when you come up over the hill on ninety seven or come down the hill and so we brought our all our assets from out of state, all my retirement income, et cetera. We've invested a couple hundred thousand, you know, or more in building and, and living on our property. We, we bought our property in two thousand and six before I retired and then we slowly developed it, but we love this place. We really like being here, but we don't like the idea of large scale solar. We have solar on our roof. I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but I think as somebody at the planning commission stated at the last meeting I attended, there's tens of thousands of acres of more appropriate place in Clickitack County than on usable scenic farm land. And we love the Centerville, Goldendale area and, and the beauty around here. I would like to request a continuation of the moratorium on, on our valley and I would also like to request that the that the commissioners consider even going so far if possible as a court procedure to block the Carragher project because I don't like big corp telling us what to do. It really bothers me. And as a consequence, if it's possible, I don't think Carragher, Cypress Creek and their parent companies are gonna stop. But there's gotta be a way to stop them. So I'm hoping that the commissioner, you commissioners can help us out with that. If it comes to that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. All right, we'll go online. Does anybody online have public comment either for or against? I see a Justin with a hand up.
Hi, Dan. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I'm gonna be a pretty short and sweet here. Y'all have heard my public hearings, just gonna say Justin Bosque out of Houston, I support the ordinance oh zero six one three two three interim zoning prohibiting large scale solar in the township laid out in the moratorium. I agree that there is an emergency in Clickitack County to preserve the public health, safety and general welfare of the people in this area. I hope that you continue and support this ordinance and that's all I really have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin. We'll stay online. Does anybody else online have public comment either for or against? The continuation, three, two, four, five. Are you unmuted?
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead, three, two, four, five. Give me your name and location for the record, please.
Ken McKeown, Golden Dale, Washington. That's capital M C, capital K U N E. I support the ordinance oh six one three two three, the interim official control prohibiting large scale solar projects over one acre. Do I have an alternative to that? So happens that there is an alternative. You don't need sun. You don't need the wind. You don't need nuclear. You don't need pump power projects. You don't need Chinese labor to produce it. It's called the Bloom Box and it's created by an American company, Bloom Energy in San Jose and Santa, Santa. Anyway, California, San Jose, California. And they use a little bit of natural gas, the solid oxide fuel cell and water and put it in a box. That's why they call it the Bloom Box and it's like putting, creating a storm, an electrical storm in the box and it creates electricity. And the, and the end result is not waste, it's water. The only thing that, that waste you get is H two O. And it already exists. There's, there's corporations already using it. So the reason I wanted to, to tell you about it is that, that creates great hope for, for a clean energy. And it runs twenty four hours, you know, you don't need the wind, you don't need the sun, you don't need nuclear power. So my hope is that we, we move our attention away from solar and, and nuclear and pump power projects to the Bloom Box. Let's get on with the future. It's, 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 it's a a science that developed from our desire to go to Mars. It was developed in the aerospace industry. And it already exists. Look it up, go to Bloom Energy, read all about it, call them up, talk to them. And let's get a future going here without ruining our beautiful county, our beautiful farm life here. I don't want to look out there and see a bunch of solar panels created by slave labor and billions of dollars that could go right back into the, the Bloom Box. And eventually we'll all have our own blue boxes. That, that's their goal is to where we will just be basically independent of the B P A. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. We'll ask Commissioner Anderson is playing around on that website. Is it hydrogen production?
It looks to be the Bloom Box is in essence, the storing of the plat, the, the power. It shows here solar farms and wind farms that, that move into the Bloom Box.
I'll have to look it up. Alrighty, let's stay online. Does anybody else online have public comment for or against the continuation of the interim zoning ordinance? So let's go back in the room. Is anybody else in the room? Go ahead and come forward, sir. And then we'll take behind you next.
I'm Warren Daisy. That, that about right? I live one mile west of Knight Road. And I am very much in favor of prohibiting large scale solar for a multitude of reasons. Some of them, well, most of them already been covered, but from, from my place, if people come out to my place, the first thing they say is it feels peaceful out here. At night, it's quiet. If I've got solar switches and nighttime maintenance crews and all the stuff that's involved with that, I no longer have peaceful. I no longer have quiet. Two of the main reasons I moved out here. One of the big things that the Golden Dale area has going for it is tourism. And I think that the tourism at any level, whether it's hotels, motels, restaurants, the Red House, anything like that is going to be negatively affected by covering the area with solar panels. Agriculture is going to be hugely negatively affected. And I'm telling you, without farmers, there's no food. Without food, you don't eat. And yes, we can import all our food from China until they decide they're gonna be at war with us and they're not gonna send us any food. One of the things about this valley that, that you'll notice is the, the beauty of some of these farms and going up Knight Road, you can see it. The first, the first house you come to, the first place is beautiful. And you can tell there's been a lot of hard work and in some of these places, generations of hard backbreaking work and they poured everything they have into it. We have a government for the people. And if eighty five, ninety percent of the people are opposed to this thing, do we have a government for the people? There's been some other things that have been covered before and some of those folks aren't here, but I'm not against the ironworkers. I think they're gonna have jobs no matter where they go. And there will be projects all over the place and when their project is done, they leave. I used to be a, a construction worker that did that, followed the work and that's what they do. I honestly, for myself, I haven't done the soil studies or anything like that. But I think once you give up farmland to solar or any of these green energy things, you've lost it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, does anybody else in the room have this comment for or against the interim zoning ordinance? Right, sir, come on forward, state your name. It's after six o'clock and the air conditioner shut off. It's a little warm in here.
Either one, Tom.
Either one.
Okay, my name is Tom Tastone. I live about a mile north of town on twelve seventeen North Columbus Avenue. And my remarks are largely going to be involving the issue of fire and certain dangers associated with solar farms and fire. And of course, this is less than a week old, the headline in the Sentinel about the fire out on Newell, Newell, Newell Road. I know it as a Newell grade road. Anyway, I brought this in as kind of a, kind of a prop, shall we say? And what I did is I penciled out some remarks, so bear with me. A volunteer fire crews were barely able to stop the Newell Road fire at the middle road. While they did succeed in saving the Lund Solar Facility, it was nip and tuck. As it was, they ran out of water. Other structures maybe could have been saved, but for the inordinate attention, the solar facility received. Solar farm fires themselves cannon, cannon will happen and the bigger the installation, the more likely they will occur. On July twenty eighth, a huge battery fire occurred in Farmington, New York. Fire officials said it would have to burn for five to seven days. They couldn't put it out. All the, all the while spewing toxic fumes, lithium ion batteries are terrible in this respect. When an electric car catches fire, you can't put it out and it takes about an hour to run its course. Solar panels themselves can catch fire and burn against viewing toxic fumes. And how could such a fire be fought over six thousand plus acres behind chain link fences? Sources I have researched indicate that in general, solar farm fires are under reported due to a negative publicity. And then there's one German study indicated that in four hundred and thirty documented cases, of course, this is in Europe, about half the photovoltaic, photovoltaic systems itself were the direct cause of fires. But what about adjacent areas spreading fire to solar, to solar farms? The recent Knight Road fire burned across what would have been the northern part of what could be the huge Knight Road solar farm. That was a tough fire to control. And through heroic efforts of Rural Seven and other agencies, Landrosa Park was saved. Our winds this spring and summer have been fierce. The same winds that drove the fire would spread toxic fumes all over Golden Dale from the planned solar installation. And there are numerous electrical hazards in attempting to put out a solar farm fire. Rural Seven and related agencies are simply not equipped to fight such fires, nor should they be expected to assume such risk. From the direct loss of farmland, increased runoff, loss of grazing and wildlife habitat and desecration of our beautiful From the direct loss of farmland, increased runoff, loss of grazing and wildlife habitat and desecration of our beautiful Clickitat Valley, uh, this facility should not be built. Eighty-five percent of solar panels are made in Communist China. They import coal out of Gillette, Wyoming to run their coal fired electric generation.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to have you wrap it up. You've hit time. So get, take another ten, fifteen seconds to close.
So they can have power to make solar panels sell, so subsidized by our federal government and so forth, anywhere. I have more to say if you want to talk to me later. Uh, anyway, continue your moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll stay in the room. Does anybody else in the room have citizen comment? Come on forward, sir.
Gene Callen, thirty-eight Knight Road, Goldendale. Um, this has been a long journey and I'll keep it short. I think two or three years, I think I've written two or three letters, been up at this table two or three times. So I'm not going to go over the points that are the valid points that are for us. I've got two points to make. One, I highly encourage you to listen to the citizens and keep this, uh, ban in place. I was, um, appreciated the planning council's conversations and, and deliberations and the unanimous approval of, of the ban. Uh, now it's, it's up to the commissioners to, to can, to keep that. So I, one, absolutely support that. But two, I think there's another battle, uh, on the horizon and that's with FSEC. And I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but I highly encourage the county to hire outside land use council to help with that topic. With that all, all in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, anybody else in the room have comment or we want to go online? Come on forward. We'll do online next. If you're waiting online, you'll be next.
Sorry. Gary England, north of town. I, I think Dave Barter and Dave West pretty much said everything that I would ever say. Uh, I, we need to continue the moratorium. The wife and I came here six years ago, invested way over a half a million bucks. Now we're going to be looking at solar cells. I don't think that's right. But I do agree with all these guys out here, people that own land. See, I was a builder all my life. And when people start telling you what to do with your land, it's but we got two sides of the story here. How do we get it together? I, I don't know. But, uh, if it was just me, I'd tell all the solar peoples, go to hell. But I'm for solar. What can I say? So I vote for this. If that's any, anything I can do.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll go online. Does anybody else online have public comment for or against maintaining the interim ordinance prohibiting large scale solar in the valleys? I don't know. I'm not seeing any. So we'll go back in the room. Does anybody in the room have comments that hasn't made comments? Come on forward, sir.
Jim Sizemore, eight one nine, Yacon Lane, Centerville, Washington. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I don't know that I can support the moratorium. This issue can, I was conflicted when I sat over in the other building, big time. Production ag land, we're losing that. There's, there's not much left. A two and a half acre parcel, a five acre, a ten acre, fifteen acre, uh, for a large operation for the cost of the machinery. It, what it takes a lot of acres to spread that cost out. And we're in an area where there is no irrigation and there won't be any more irrigation here because the state has stopped issuing irrigation permits. So, uh, what worries me most is the moratorium is a moot point when they go to the state permitting authority. And what I would encourage this board of commissioners as you wrestle with trying to protect, because you are the protector of the property rights of every landowner in this county. And so you want to make sure you know what the unintended consequences are when you pick an area and say your property rights are this over here. And in another area, the property rights for the same thing are different for landowners there. Uh, that be careful. But the FSEC committee, what worries me most with it is it should be that the permitting authority is responsible for county infrastructure, the pollution and cleanup. And, and whatever else, it should not fall back on the taxpayers, the landowners in this county. Now, if the county permits, when they permitted the wind farms, the first one they got educated on, because they did not protect the infrastructure and Dot Road was all rebuilt by county tax dollars that was destroyed by the wind farm construction. I do believe that the only way to affect FSEC and to get the county safe is we need a legislative fix. And I think all the other thirty-eight counties in this state would stand with you on that. Of, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any buildings and grounds in the building or are they all in homes? Curious because we should have had a little forethought about, uh, telling them to keep the air conditioners running. So you're all probably getting a little warm and stuffy. Thank you, Mr. Sizemore. The other option would be propping doors open and, and whatnot. Um, so we will continue in the room. Let's see, anybody else in the room have public comment that hasn't uh, had a chance? Come on forward, ma'am.
Elaine Harvey, Goldendale, Clickitat County resident. I'm, I support this ordinance, this moratorium to, um, exclude and prohibit um, industrial solar in these specified areas. For the reasons, my sincere, um, concern for the lands of this valley, the lands of this, of my ancestral lands, for my cultural resources, for the wildlife and the fish and the water, because they all matter. And I know these projects, if permitted, will impact all of those. So I, you know, that's the reason I come here today to talk on behalf of our resources as, as the, um, first people of this land. For thousands of years, not just a hundred.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's go back online. Does anybody else online have public comment for or against the continuation of the interim zoning ordinance? I'm not seeing it. So we'll go back in the room. Is anybody in the room have any comment that, uh, hasn't had a chance? Come forward, sir. Name and general location for the record. Once you get up here.
My name is Luke Throop. Uh, live just east of town here, out on Bickleton Highway. Kind of new to this conversation. I've been keeping tabs on the solar debate as it's ebbed and flowed. And it's been a, a challenge to resolve the conflict between individual property rights and what's best for the community. And I think that really that responsibility lies unfortunately upon your shoulders as the commissioners, you are our elected representatives. And if we're to have representative government, which ostensibly we do in the United States of America, have representative governments, you're elected to represent the people. Now, listening in here now, just tonight, I mean overwhelmingly in favor of supporting the solar moratorium. We don't, it's not that we're against industrial solar, it's that, uh, this isn't the right place. We need to have zoning and ordinances to deal with that. That's fine. Mr. Sizemore made the comment about property rights and having legislative options. My question to you to chew on, mind you, is, is it up to the state to decide how we live our lives in Clickitat County? Does the state get to decide how we can and cannot use our lands? How we can and cannot develop our community? Or is that a community level decision? And if it is a community level decision, this is where we flesh it out, in the community forum, in these meetings. Now, like I said, I, I'm new to the conversation. I, I have kept tabs. I've, I've spoke to Greg when he was standing out in front of the post office. I had no idea about all the harm and the toxic fumes and all this stuff with the solar, you know, it sounds good. Let's go green. Let's say the planet sounds good. Right up until something goes up in flames, toxic fumes are spilling out and you can't put it out. We don't have the resources in the county to deal with that threat. So if we want to talk about property rights, oh, you have the right to build a solar farm and have all this stuff and get all this money. That's great. Do we, the people, have the right to take that money back when all hell breaks loose and goes up in flames? Because there needs to be some accountability with that. So let me get back to my point. Who has my time for it? All right.
You're not used to having a clock.
I'm not used to having a clock. What I hear and what I would, you know, I'm in favor of upholding the solar moratorium and thank you to the planning commission. Thank you to the commissioners who have stood up and listened to the people to push pause. There are other options. We don't need to barrel ahead, bullheaded and make this happen against the will of the people. If you do that, you have violated your oath of office to represent we, the people in Clickitat County. That's all I have to say about that.
Right. Thank you, sir. Does anybody else in the room have? You look like you're coming. Oh, you're going to make me tear up already. That's the end of that, I guess. So it was a visual comment and not a public comment.
So.
It's, uh, we didn't give you a copy, but we'll make sure you get a copy. It's from Bev and Joey Estman. Uh, it says, please stop large scale solar. Anyway, it's, uh, power transformers with, uh, what looks like some kind of rare. I wasn't even going to try to pronounce that name because I knew how to butcher it.
I'll get a copy from you.
Yep. Yeah. Make sure we get a copy. We're there for the record. Um, anybody else in the room, public comment for or against the continuation of the interim zoning ordinance? I will go back online. Does anybody online for and against have any more comment for the board of commissioners today? Well, here. We'll go another time in the room. Just checking. I'm not hearing it. Uh, with that, we'll move on to board opportunity to request clarification of any public statements. Do we have any? Is there any statements made that you would like to ask questions? I doubt, sir.
I don't have any questions. I wish they would each had more time.
Yep. Um, so we'll go with one last time for any citizens that has not had the right to make public comment on this hearing proposal to uh, either for or against the interim zoning regulation. Not hearing it. With that, uh, we will close the public hearing to further public comments and further written comments. And move on to discussion by the board. But that, I guess I'll take the liberty. Commissioner Expo, I'm going to call him Commissioner Sizemore because he's, was a commissioner and, and, um, he made a very good statement with, he was conflicted on this issue. And I can totally understand how he was conflicted on this issue. Because on one hand, you're trying to protect people's constitutional rights and you're trying to protect their property rights. And I am a big proponent of private property rights. Up until today, I've had an A plus rating with the Property Rights Foundation. But where property rights need to have a pause or need to be controlled is when your property rights interfere with your neighbor's property rights. If, if we're going to allow you to do something that degrade, degrades your neighbor's property rights or impacts them in a health and safety standpoint, in my opinion. So I understand you have to weigh both those sides and try to make everybody happy. But I also agree you have to listen to the people, like multiple people have said through here. Because what many people may not know is when I ran for this seat, I talked about the solar farm that was going to be happening on that road. And I would say for the most part, nobody was paying attention. It wasn't until after I got elected that more people started paying attention. But I also look at, how did I get elected? I got elected because I listened to the people. Uh, and I do my job in here every day, not voting how I would want to vote or what benefits me financially or my family or what have you. I'm always going to vote on the side of the people. And I think that's very important and it should be a very important reminder to all elected officials. Um, because the consequences the people have is you won't be there very long. Um, and rightfully so. So when we have to weigh private property rights against the health and safety of our community, it's not just preserving ag land, which yeah, fine, but private property rights to me trumps preserving ag land. So is it private property rights over you having to look at solar panels? And, and maybe lowering your property values. Hmm. Now you're actually, you're harmed. But when you look at solar panels over potentially losing three hundred homes. So in the Bickleton fire, talking with emergency management and DNR, um, they both said flat out that the Luntel solar project has about three hundred, three and a half feet of grass underneath. If that grass catches fire, they will have to order mandatory evacuations and evacuations in this county. Thank God for Bob's anger are you probably need to leave, but it's up to you. I'm not going to strong arm you out of your house. Because yeah, they're not strong arming me out of my house either. So I very much appreciate that. But if I was told by emergency management and DNR that if that grass caught fire underneath the solar panels, it would be a mandatory evacuation of not only the residents downstream, but every firefighter anywhere near the smoke. So they thought for sure if that happened, that fire is going to blow all the way to Benton County. Take the Knight Road fire up here. And, and this is again, where I would say this board throughout the last ten or fifteen years has lacked any forethought. It's all a matter of what works today and not the It's all a matter of what works today and not the possible consequences of what can happen tomorrow. Um, and like New York probably did with the people using that, that statement. If that solar farm was there and that fire took off and you couldn't get the fire crews around in front to stop that fire. And then the, the fire gets on the panels and now they gotta pull back fire support and just watch Pine Forest burn. Watch Potter Rose Park burn. And then it burns all the way across the other side of 97. By the time they can get anything on it. Anybody asking for their own private property rights over the health and safety and property values of 300 plus homes. Oh, and by the way, if that happened at Knight Road, both emergency management and DNR said that the entire city of Golden, it would have to be evacuated. Does that trump private property rights? Does that trump some taxing district being able to get a little more tax revenue? Or a landowner being able to lease his property? So while I feel for the landowners that were struggling to make ends meet as a farmer, I get it. I understand it. I understand your, you know, your children might not want to stay in this industry and you don't know what to do and you have no social security value and I, I get it. I understand it. But you also have to understand that our job is to protect the people. And I don't know in my personal opinion, how a commissioner can sit here and vote to protect the people and not vote that it's a bad idea to put solar panels right next to a community like this, especially on the west side of it where the wind is going to blow into the community. So I'm open to discussion from my seatmates. I'm open to debate, but I don't know. I mean, I've had the same opinion for two and a half years. You can try to change it if you want, but it'll be my recommendation that we extend the emergency zoning ordinance because there's absolutely an emergency present. Um, just the Cypress Creek Fire should show that to the people that never thought it could happen. And that this, uh, continues to stay before the planning commission for a permanent regulation fix. Uh, recommendation from them. And that's what I have to say.
So this, this for me is a hard conversation, but I need to say it. And Luke, um, thank you for your comments about this does rest with the commissioners. And over the past 30 years, doing the work I've done, I've always respected the commissioners and felt they were wonderful people that dedicated their lives to this job. It's a time consuming, very hard job. Nobody has an idea. I didn't even have an idea how many hours you put in if you're going to be a good commissioner. But I have to say, the people were sold a bill of goods. And I'm very, very disappointed since 2018 that the call by our planning director who said, we need to redo our regulations. We need to look at that EOZ. We need to rightfully, um, usher in solar the way it needs to be. Do it right for the landowners. Do it right for land use planning. And then the world went dark. Um, nobody brought it up again. It was in none of the meetings. I've read everything trying to find any more information about solar. Um, and it was really disappointing to me that there was a choice by the commissioners not to direct staff to move into that new future of designing a good future for solar in our county. And that also left a fairy tale for the people who believed we have property rights. We can do what we want. In reality, we all know we don't have property rights. We all have laws for everything we have to do. You have to apply for permits for every shovel of dirt you turn. And to say to me that you can turn valuable ag or ag property into an industrial use without going through processes, having a hard look at what that does and having correct permits is just wrong. And it left the idea that somehow we were taking something away from somebody when really we weren't doing our due diligence to make it go through the process. So even those people were protected. Uh, even for them, some of the solar leases are tough. They have a gag order on them. Some people don't have the money for an attorney or the expertise themselves to read those documents. What's to say that those water rights will be left within that document? Those are a property right. And if those water rights are sold out by the solar companies or by someone else during that period of time, ag won't return. We're, we're going to have who knows what in the end with that property when it has to be cleaned up. So that's a problem for me with this is the lack of due diligence and the lack of planning. And, um, our planning director has taken a lot of kicking over this, but she's also an employee and she's been at the direction of her commissioners. And she does the best she can to move through with this. And I hope as a board, we can come to an agreement where we start planning a future and using our departments and our department heads in a way that honors them too, that helps them move to due diligence and good work. As far as the Land Hill, uh, area and that fire, I was out with in that area too, during that time, ran into a lot of the DNR people and something that was said about that in a meeting was it made it really, really, really tough to fight those fires because we depend on those planes. We saw it several times in our county now. Uh, east or west of White Salmon here on Knight Road, those planes saved us. The planes and the helicopters coming and saved us. They had a terrible time in that end of the county, trying to navigate around the wind towers and the, um, the power lines. Uh, they, they just couldn't plan the flights. They couldn't plan how to get those planes in around because of the wind and how to miss all those obstacles that were blocking them. And then also they can't drop the red retardant that does such a good job. They can't drop it on the solar panels. It's a clay product. It'll break every one of them. So they can't use it in the midst of that solar field if we get that. Uh, edges maybe, but if it gets into the solar fields, they can't use that retardant. So those are consequences that we haven't, you know, unintended consequences is where we're at right now. And it makes it work worse. And I believe exactly a legislative fix is due. Because anything that's in a hurry is wrong. Every time I get involved in anything, if somebody's in a hurry, there's a problem. And for these permits to be able to be laid down at the state with every availability to ignore everything that's sensible or right or legal or honest to the people who own these properties and the people that live in the areas is just wrong. And legislatively, we have to band together and do the best we can here, but we also need to start working with our legislators and push back and tell the state, get responsible. Don't, don't make this into a, well, we can't do anything about it because FSSEC is going to do it. Yeah, we can. And the state needs to be called into responsibility on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more, if you let me sneak in. She, she brought up a good point where there needs to be a legislative fix. Unfortunately, uh, in this state, that's a little hard. Last year there was a bill before the legislature that I worked on with Washington State Association of Counties on their legislative steering committee that would regulate how green energy projects are taxed and make sure that they had, uh, community benefit. Um, and I pushed that with the Washington State Association of Counties to the point where we had unanimous support from every county in the state. Supporting that bill. Democrat and Republican alike. It went to the legislature, green energy projects got its head, their hands on it, manipulated it, changed it, tweaked it in their best interest because they have some politicians in their pocket. So unfortunately I don't have a lot of, I mean, how often do you have a bill that's supported by Democrats and Republicans alike in all 39 counties? Uh, this was an opportunity for the legislature to listen to the people. They chose not to. So I, while I would like to see a state legislative change, I don't know that we can, but I think we can do what we can on a county level to at least throw some roadblocks in front of them.
I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying, uh, commissioner. And to, to Mr. Through, you, you make a good point. Does the state have the ability to tell us what to do? And as the county government, we are a subdivision of state government. We can only walk as far as commissioners, our legislative authority only extends as far as the state legislature gives us authority. When it comes, uh, to most things, yes, your local land use planning in Washington state is a local decision-making body that is done by your commissioners, uh, as the legislative authority. Oregon in the 1970s went a different way, top-down approach from the state. Um, and they have a completely different path in that state. Where we're at though, in this situation is because of the creation of FSSEC, which was done legislatively. It gives them the, the ability for preemption along with the governor to preempt any local plans with regards to large-scale solar, nuclear, coal, gas-fired, any of those type of energy generations as well as transmission lines. Mr. Callen pointed out that this has not best been a fight for the last couple of years. This has been a fight when the Knight Road Substation was built and they came in and did eminent domain on people's properties. I hear everyone's concerns. I hear everyone's fears and worries. I am a firm believer in private property rights. Um, I think that is, you know, what this nation is built on. I think that in the last few weeks, we've learned a lot of things. In the last week, we've learned a lot of things about the permitting of these projects that I hopefully we can use at the, at the FSSEC level, um, to to make them think very critically about the location of these and the fire danger and what that does. I can't sit here because usually as the legislative authority, we could sit here and say, we can protect you. We can make sure that that doesn't happen. But because of the state legislature, which I agree with both of my seatmates, we have, we need legislative fix um, to take away that, that power that's given to FSSEC. The problem is, especially this last year, what we're seeing is, is that the legislate legislature in Washington is attempting to give FSSEC more power and more authority to make decisions that affect local communities in counties. So we're in a weird, weird position. Um, I agree with, with you commissioners all are that, uh, anything that happens quickly is usually a mistake. Um, because mistakes get made when it gets done quickly. When this, I brought up the interim zoning in January as the best way we would have in order to, um, to limit FSSEC's ability, um, to do what they're about to do. My problem is, is not with voting on this. I voted, uh, to abstain from the vote when this was passed because it did not have, I did not go in front of the county attorney on whether or not that this decision can be upheld. Because there's a lot of money at stake on every side. Uh, what I found is usually whenever there's a lot of money at stake, somebody's going to sue some way down the line. And so when we create something, I want it to be lock solid. I want to ensure that, that nobody can come in and say that there's an issue with the process. Because what we found over the years, especially with the Forest Service, is that appeals happen all the time and things get thrown out. Whether it's SEPA, NEPA, and it's always on process issues, especially when it comes to zoning. Uh, we've seen that in the Houston, BZ area where we tried to do the rezoning of that area now, what, seven times? And it got thrown out again and again and again. My issue with this ish, that this is, is that we didn't take it in front of, uh, the county attorney who was the one who was going to have to, um, stand behind this.
Just for clarification, sir, it was sent to the attorney and he chose not to respond.
This was written in one day. When, when it was done, the planning director started writing at 11 o'clock and we passed it later that day. It did not have. Thank you to both my seatmates for allowing me the, um, ability to ask the questions um, for a public opinion request. And I won't go into the details unless my seatmates want to release that. Um, because technically that's attorney-client privilege. Um, I did have a conversation with the prosecutor before that, um, before we received this and, um, you know, I voted to abstain because I was concerned about the process and Lori always talks about the process of doing it. And I want to ensure that the process is right. I want to ensure that the process is done correctly with regards to what is going in front of the planning commission for changing the actual zoning, not an interim, but actually changing the zoning over the area that, that the public would like to see the way it's supposed to be done.
So I'd like to address that process point because I am a process person. And we do struggle with process as a board. That's why I asked on this workshop this week, we're going to be talking about the commissioner's relationship and how it relates to process and priorities. Um, when we talked about this process of being able to discuss with the prosecutor, different things. Of course, I value the idea of if you have something you need to talk to the prosecutor, we've all agreed that we'll have that latitude to do that. But for this, um, I guess I misunderstood because I had not seen the questions that were asked of the prosecutor. I didn't approve of them as content or what they were being asked about. And I would have appreciated, and I think we would have had a better process had the questions come back to all three of us for approval. Because what we have back is an opinion to the BOCC, but it was really should be just an opinion to one commission who asked the questions. I was not involved as a BOCC on that. On that opinion.
Right. But we've, we've, we've agreed that, uh, while it, the chairman can always ask that, that all of us can ask questions.
Correct.
Uh, we don't have to be in alignment for the questions that are asked or how they're asked or, or who usually it's staff that, that writes it up for us.
And I have a problem with that.
I, I guess I would intervene and ask you if your conversation here, your argument is trying to turn this into a political debate by the board of commissioners on the quality of representing they're getting from their attorney. Because it sounds like that's the argument you're trying to make.
No, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is respect.
If you're, if you're arguing that, that legal opinion should be followed based on what was written that is absolute bupkis. That's what it's going to turn into.
Are, are you saying that the legal opinion is bupkis?
Yes.
What I see is liability based on the legal opinion. What I see is not only is the liability because of the way that we, we went around adopting this. And I hate to get into, you know, the nitty gritty of the process when we're talking about something so major. But the process is, I'm well aware is what people will appeal and sue and take the county to task for.
Well, and that, that process unfortunately is flawed. Due to what was written back in that opinion, uh, there was some misrepresentation of how that process happened. That was flawed. Um, and so some of his determinations that were made were based off of information that was given to him that wasn't correct.
And I guess I would add that while I understand you're trying to, or my opinion is you're trying to pacify and not be a no vote on this. Uh, although you've been opposed to it for two and a half years, you've been obstructionary to this board on the issue for two and a half years. You've done essentially everything you possibly could do to undermine any legal standing we possibly have on the issue. That now you're, well, I'm only opposed to it because of the legal process. Why were you opposed to it two years ago? Why were you making agreement with me that we would go through the processes to update our code, but yet I could never get you to do it? So some of these people might believe the hype. I don't believe the hype. Um, I find it bupkis. And I, I personally am not going to get into the debate. Voters will get into the debate at the next election where they can either choose me or choose you. Hopefully they don't choose both of us. One way or the other, I'll be happy. Because the voters need to be represented. And if your argument is, oh, this is legal. I don't want to get into the debate on the argument, but this board has legislative authority to make land use decisions that are very rarely reversed by a court. Because of one attorney's opinion that because some That because something wasn't line item stricken on every single thing, the document will not be found. Legal. I, I call BS. Um, I'm not an attorney, but it isn't too hard to research legal opinion and. Court findings. That I can pick that literally apart. And when this board has tried to send everything possible related to solar to the prosecutor since the start of this year. And gets told, I'm not looking at that or no, or just doesn't send a response. What are we just? Going to allow our fourth county commissioner? The prosecutor to be obstructionist and not allow this board to do its job. Because he wants the solar panels. So if he can stop us from doing it. Then, I mean, that, that's, that's. Yeah, no, there's, there's bigger fish to fry on the prosecutor front. Do I think we need legal counsel, outside legal counsel? Absolutely. I'm still waiting for a second vote to go to Superior Court Judge. Because I believe I have enough documentation. To testify before a judge and get outside counsel in a heartbeat. That would then provide this county. With outside counsel on all issues related to solar. Because yes, absolutely, we're getting a bad legal opinion, biased opinion with incorrect fasting, incorrect stuff. So. We can go there all you want. Um, I'm done debating the issue when the way you debate is not to back up your case. It's to try to undermine other people. And, oh, what you did was wrong or what you did is illegal and what, just state your facts. If you're pro-solar. Say the leaseholders should be able to sell their property for their property rights. Just say it. Don't undermine somebody else's case. And you order the back of your own. That's why I don't debate with you anymore. Because it always turns into something or you, you know, me and Lori come in and start this moratorium at the beginning of the year because we had conversations last year. About this, when it was fully legal. Cause she was not seated and she was not sworn in. And you go run off to the paper and imply that we're having illegal open public meetings. And that's written in the paper. You just throw us under the bus when you know damn well that any conversation before election is not an open public meeting because me and you had them. But that's. How you do your argument. And it's, I guess I'd say I've put up with it for two and a half years and I'm just not gonna. No, I'm just not going to do it anymore. So you have where I'm at. If you want to make a statement, continue your statement, that's fine, but just don't. Try to make a statement without throwing your seatmates under the bus to make your point. That's all I'm asking.
May I continue now?
Sure.
I purposely not said anything that's within the PA opinion request. Uh, because if I did bring it up, then it would make it a public record and it would have access to it. And I'm trying to respect my seatmates while also. Trying to respect the fact that, uh, you say we send things over to the PA and he doesn't respond, he doesn't respond. And then when the PA does respond, you call it bupkis. I am in the. Uh, situation where, uh, we have legal counsel. Uh, when legal counsel gives us a PA opinion. We have the ability to go against that opinion. But if we do go against that opinion, that creates. Legal jeopardy A for the county. Because that person, legal counsel, has to represent the county. Doesn't represent us, represents the county. And so when you go against the legal opinion of not just one, but there's two attorneys over there who work on these together. Um, or you ignore those opinions. At some point, it also creates personal liability. And that was the discussion that I'd had previous. As is that you're welcome to do whatever you want, but you have to accept the consequences. And I'm not, and I, I'm not speaking for the prosecuting attorney, but he made it very clear to me that there is. Uh, an enormous amount of liability with the process. Not with the outcome. But with the process. And that's why I've said in January. We got to follow the right process, just like you always say, process, process, process. And I've seen it from living here and being in the community council and all the times that we went through zoning. How many times it got through the court system and it was thrown out because of process. And I don't want to see that here.
And all of those had legal review. Yes.
At the time.
Yes.
Yes. And even with the legal review, it was still thrown out. And so now we have an opinion and I can't in good faith go against the opinion. Of the PA for the process. And that was what I was worried about and why I abstained the first time. Is because I was worried about that. Um, I still can't go against the opinion of the PA from the conversations about the process.
You find it question.
But I'm not trying to throw either of you under the bus.
Okay, that statement you did very well, not trying to throw your seatmates under the bus. I appreciate that. I do have a question. It sounds like that legal opinion was asked for on June 14th, according to the email. And it was returned to us literally like a day or two days ago, right before this hearing.
Three o'clock yesterday.
Do you, three o'clock yesterday, do you figure? There might be some, and then your first statement today was, hey, do you, because of the legal advice, you want to postpone the hearing today? Sure looks like there's some obstructionist to play that you sit on legal advice for, somebody sits on legal advice for six weeks. And then miraculously throws it out. Twenty-four hours or less below, before a public hearing. So that we could potentially stall the public hearing until EFSEC rules next week. It's just too, yeah, no, it's. I'm sorry, you asked the question before, is all trust lost? And because of multiple. Different scenarios. Whether we're talking water rights or internet or whatever. Yeah, the answer is yes. And it's now, it's again lost with the prosecutor, so. I am not going to. Do nothing. And allow an elected official who is in charge of giving legal advice. To be obstructionist to the legislative branch and not provide the legislative branch with what it needs to make legislation. Because he doesn't agree with the legislation. And. Like I said, I, I have. Multiple now. Um, that, that is the case, so is, I don't, I'm, I'm. I apologize to the general public for having to be in this debate right now. Because we shouldn't be. This should be about the solar issue. You should be weighing your opinion like me that says you believe it's there or you don't believe it's there. We take the vote and move on. Um, but unfortunately, you all get to see how government works in a nutshell. Uh, it, it, and for most of you, it should be pretty much a tragedy. Uh, some of you, you probably. Are used to it, but, uh, yeah.
Well. We all know if, if, because we're not allowed to communicate, this is the only opportunity we do have to hash things out. Is in a public session. So to be clear though, and I've spoken with staff. We have interim zoning controls currently in place. Okay, when the vote was taken, those zoning controls are in place. This hearing tonight. Is only the required hearing within sixty days. In order to ma- ensure that those can remain in place for the six months. And then we make a decision on whether or not they stay or they go, but they're still in. In, in control. Whether we decide anything tonight or next week has no impact on what is currently in front of EFSEC. There's zero. And there's the major reason for that is because the interim zoning controls were not in place at the time of the application. And so if there was another project that came in today. That applied for, for an application today, we could easily point and say, we have interim zoning controls. This is not consistent. Your land use consistency decision, we are not going to write the letter that says it's consistent with our land use plans. That's easy. I'm not going to lie to the public and say that that's going to protect the public. Because EFSEC and the governor have preemption authority. What I'm talking about today is we have, we have an opinion. There are options on how to deal with this coming out of that opinion. My, I asked at the beginning whether or not we would like to postpone this. So that we could talk with. Our counsel to ensure that we move forward so that we have something that can withstand scrutiny. And that's what I care about. Because we already have the interim zoning controls in place. Doesn't matter.
Do we though?
And is, we have them in place unless somebody wants to sue the county. And say that we did it inappropriately, in which case we might not have them. My advice to my seatmates, of course, would be to ensure. That we do it. The right way, the legal way with the process, so that we're not asking our staff. To write up ordinances. In fifteen minutes. Because that is asking. To get litigated and for the county to lose. Like you said, if you do something fast, you're going to make mistakes. We know that that was the case.
Well, I appreciate all your comment. If I ever need legal advice, I'll let you know. Uh, because that's not asking for the county would lose. You don't know, you're not a judge. I, I've heard many legal opinions. Um, from you on many issues and I haven't seen one of them that was correct yet. So I'm not saying I'm matlock by any chance. But. I think we stand just fine on the legal ground we are on. I find that the document that we created is not illegal. I find the legislative intent of this board will withstand the scrutiny. Of the decision that you can't change the rule now because the previous board didn't think there was an emergency. Um, show me the findings of fact that said no emergency was present. That's one of the legal opinions we have because the previous board, you guys will love this. Because the previous board didn't think there was an emergency, this board can't think there's an emergency. So my posi- position hasn't changed and his position hasn't changed. So because Dave Sauter didn't think there was emergency, Lori can't think there's. That's legal counsel. It's absolute bupkis. That's why elections are here. So opinions can change. Um, and when you're using that as legal advice, because the findings of fact of the original moratorium. Said no emergency exists. Hmm, I would challenge you that maybe that's why I switched my vote to begin with is to get all those findings of facts pulled up. Because there are no findings of facts in that. So now you can't challenge this one against that one because that one didn't exist. Technically, that one's illegal because it doesn't have any findings of fact that. Never been a legal opinion about that. So. I'll wait for a judge to decide. I'm feeling quite confident on where we stand. Any other discussion before? I would entertain a motion or I would be happy to step down and make the motion myself. I have it written right here. If there's no further discussion. All right, I'll step down as chairman. Uh, and move the Clicktack County Board of Commissioners acting in our legislative capacity hereby extend the interim zoning ordinance. Zero, zero, six, one, three, two, three prohibiting large scale solar development over one acre was in size. Within township ranges, three, fourteen, three, fifteen, three, sixteen, four, fourteen, four, fifteen, four, sixteen, four, seventeen. Five, fifteen, five, sixteen, five, seventeen located within Clicktack County. Furthermore, let it be known that the Clicktack County Board of Commissioners feel that an emergency is still present. That the fire risks are real. And we are taking this action to provide for the immediate preservation and health, safety and welfare of the residents of Clicktack County. And to protect the customs, culture, natural resources and resource lands of the residents of the Golden Hill, Southern Hill Valley. Uh, my motion is to. Um, extend. The interim order.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have motion, the second, any discussion on the motion?
Process. Staff. Um, with this motion, should the motion say, the motion direct staff to, uh, write an ordinance for signature next Tuesday?
Um, yeah, that's fine because she doesn't have findings of fact until the hearing, well. And she has all this fine testimony to go off of. So, um. Yeah, I will add. Direct staff to, uh, prepare the actual document for signature. Um, how long do you think it will actually take? Do you think it will take until next Tuesday? I say if we're going to be here on Thursday, let's see if we can have it by Thursday. If we can find it, we can't find two. Um, actually, no, let's just plan it for Tuesday. Um, we can sign it first thing and when you get done drafting it, then you can send it over to the prosecutor's office to see if he wants to review it or not.
That was going to be my other thing is, is I want to make sure we have enough time to send it to the prosecuting attorney's office for legal review. Not just.
Hasn't mattered. Well. Amazingly refused to form is legal review. According to the Supreme Court, when you've proved something to form, you are acting and telling. That there is nothing in that that you find that could propose, could propose. Issues down the road. It's not just spellings and grammar. So I'm fine with a predestined form. With that, that is an amended motion. In a second, any further discussion? I guess as we follow the procedure, we will vote on the amendment before we vote on the actual motion and the amendment was to direct staff. To create a document.
An ordinance.
Right ordinance.
Findings of fact.
And findings of fact. Um, so all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor of the motion to extend the interim zoning controls, say aye. Aye. All those in, are all those opposed? All those abstaining?
Aye, based on legal counsel advice.
So, yeah, we got that. Two in favor, one abstaining. And then all three in favor of the amendment. Might make your note taking a little tricky. With that, I will state that the public hearing is closed. Um, and any other discussion by the board or by the staff or any questions of us before we adjourn? Until Thursday's workshop. Yee-haw, I'll allow it. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. Can this mean the watch later online?
Are you glutton for punishment?
No, no, but I really want my wife to see it.
That's not what I would like. I would like to have a nice, calm. Um, this meeting will be recorded and it will be uploaded to the internet like the rest of our meetings that we have on Tuesdays. Um, it might take a few days to be there. Um, but it will be there and there's a, a section for it and if you can't find it. Um, call staff and. And have them guide you to it, but yes, sir. It will be there for your amusement for a long time.
Been to a lot of them.
Yee-haw, I'm glad I can make your day. All right, uh, if there's nothing further and the public has nothing further. Not seeing it, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm second.
So moved and so seconded. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Uh, I will just mention one thing. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for being involved in your government and. I will just mention one thing. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for being involved in your government and get more involved in your government. Pay attention, volunteer for our citizen boards. Keep your eye on the ball. With that, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.